Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 10th study session San Luis Coastal Unified School District. Our item 1.01 is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public comment to us?
There's no public comment.
Seeing that, I am advising we do now have a translator. Is that true, Ms. Dawson?
Actually, we do have a translator. If anybody requires translation, she did join.
Okay. So, hold on a second. I'll read the statement regarding translation. So. So, we're offering translation services for our Spanish-speaking attendees. To access translation, please click on the globe at the bottom of your screen and then the language. At this time, we'd like to ask if anyone who needs translation would please click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, Mandy.
Rosie will translate.
Buenos dias, señores. Estamos aquí ofreciendo servicios de interpretación. Si usted necesita interpretación del inglés al español, por favor, mire en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y oprima el globo, y eso nos hace saber que usted está necesitando de nuestros servicios. Muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you very much. We can move on. We can move on to item 4.01, demographic analysis and enrollment projections. Mr. Pinkerton.
Yeah, so I'll be leading this. And so let me share a screen real quick and pull it up. Hey, Mandy, can you help me? It's not letting me share.
Yep, one second.
All right, so for the board and for the public to know that, you know, we recently had our demographic analysis enrollment projection report completed. So this is something that, you know, school districts do periodically, like every five to 10 years, kind of an update. And so for us, I think for Mr. Bonham and myself, as we were looking at, you know, the potential of a school bond and with the number of houses being built in the area, right? In particular, in San Luis Obispo, we felt like it was a good idea for us to get this, you know, this report completed. Have basically a new assessment of kind of where we're at, you know, both enrollment-wise as well as demographics. You know, where do they see us long-term in terms of, you know, student population growth, those types of things? So, we've had a couple of kind of crazy years when it comes to student population. So due to COVID, the pandemic, you know, we saw a major decrease a couple of years ago in terms of overall student population. We had a lot of kids leaving the district, go to private schools, homeschools, those types of things. And while we did regain some of those students back this year, there's still about, you know, a couple hundred kids declined from what we see in the past. As some of the board members know, who've been part of the board for a long time, we had really a huge student population 20 years ago, right? I mean, so much so that we, or you can leave it open, so much so that we, it sounds like, you know, we are open moderate of elementary school. This is, you know, we still had Semisite, so had Moroel, right? I mean, we were seeing a lot of growth throughout the district during those times. So it declined, you know, dramatically since then, right? That you'll see kind of some of that in this report. But I thought it'd be a really good perspective because you see a lot of people, people talk about it, you know, they look at, oh, look at all the homes. Where are the kids gonna go? What are we gonna do? And so I thought it'd be really good just kind of walk the board through this today, have you get a feel for, you know, kind of the information. And of course, answering questions you might have in terms of the report itself. So literally, this is kind of the main item today for the study, you know, for the agenda. On top of all of that, I thought, you know, with moving to these new voting regions, right? I thought it would also be really good for the board to kind of understand the actual parent contingency in their particular voting block. You know, where, you know, in terms of now the different groups, you know, Moro Bay, Los Osos, right, San Luis, those types of things. So some of the information that we'll go through will show you, like the CL Smith area. There's actually a large contingency of students that are from CL Smith that don't necessarily go to CL Smith, right? So CL Smith Elementary School, 400 kids, but, you know, there's 600 some kids in that voting area, right? So a lot more families there, but that's because we have Teach, that's because we have Pacheco, that's because we have Bellby-Santa Fe in our area. So those are some of the things that I think you'll find interesting again, both just looking at the projections, thinking about future planning, as well as kind of how this will all play into elections and those types of things, okay? So without any further ado, I'm literally just gonna kind of run through this report with you. So again, the first part is just a kind of an executive summary, right? It talks about kind of what this group did. So this is King Consulting, they worked with us and really had a great experience with them. They're also helping us with some of our, looking at getting some of our state funding for projects, right? Currently gonna look at getting us some funding for our, you know, potential TK funding for, you know, making some of those modernizations, things like that. So this section here, you know, future enrollment trends will be affected by three main factors in coming years to creating more short-term. Of course, they looked at the residential development. In particular, see San Luis, so this will have growth. Not seeing that same growth in Los Osos, of course, lack of building. And then the addition of universal transitional kindergarten, the impact of that on the school district, right? And then ultimately, what they're seeing is this smaller cohort of students because of reduced birth rates in our area. So, you know, they chart that, right, over time, each year, and look at it. So this gives you kind of a, they look at the past 10, 20 years, and then project into the next 10 years. For the most part, what they focus on with the school and what they would like us to focus on is this moderate enrollment projection. So there's three, right? They have a low-projection enrollment, they have a moderate, which is the middle, and then they have like a high, what could be, and you'll see this. You'll see the three different, you know, options as we move through, but the one that they're sharing here kind of shows, you know, what they're projecting basically over the next 10 years is really steady student enrollment, okay? A little bit of growth at times, but kind of either going down, but you could see that the dramatic decline that was caused by, by the pandemic, right, the 7,000, 330 that occurred there.
So, Brian.
Yes.
So when they, they kept referring to this, what did they consider the base year? Remember how they talked about, was it the, you know, when they were looking at, is it the 2021 or 2020, 1920 years? They kept referring in the report to a base year. I can't remember. I highlighted it somewhere.
Yeah, I want, it might be the 1920, right?
Right, could you, could you repeat the question?
So yeah, basically, Ms. Frams asking what the, what they refer in the report to a base year of looking at. So normally, they're looking at 10 years out, so it would be 10 years from now, right? So looking at this year, potentially be the base year, but where exactly are you seeing the base year?
Well, we kind of threw off the report.
That's a big question.
Okay.
And I can't remember which one it was, was it the year prior to San Luis Obispo or the current?
I'm thinking it is, but let's go through and we'll see.
So, Ryan, I have a question, just to start out. I was confused by the term portable. So I pictured someplace like where I live, mobile home, and that you could move it. And so that, that sort of affected it. And after we spoke, I realized that it's not that. So can you go over this one? Say it again, please.
Are we talking about classrooms?
Yeah, the term is always portable classroom. And in that, is that because it's brought in on a truck, or is it that because we could actually move it if we wanted to?
So you can't, yeah, so again, a port, so when we talk about portable classrooms, modular classrooms.
Oh, no, no, yeah.
So yeah, they kind of, you know, they use both at times. And so yes, they're, and they're actually different now, right? And that I would tell you is because we have like the newer kind of modular classrooms that we used to build in Santa Fe are almost more like a stick-built, like you wouldn't really move those classrooms. But other modular or portable classrooms, those are classrooms that can be moved, right? You can move them.
I think another term for that is relocatables, right?
Yes, right, yeah, it's a relocatable classroom. But all that said, it's not, you know, because there's, people also think, well, did you just lease those? Do you just have it for a little bit of time? Which is the conversation I had with Mr. Buckman. And so, no, right, you still, you still purchase the portable classroom. You still, you know, and most of our portables are not moved. They become permanent classrooms. I mean, just to be honest, right, they're, they're there for 30, 40 years, you know, long-term type of thing.
And so, this may be too premature in here. So the life expectancy, I'll call it more modular, you know, life expectancy of a modular classroom over its life expectancy is, we have an number that we can.
25 years for portable. This life expectancy, but they usually go on longer if we, you know, modernize them, clean them up, take care of them.
Right, thanks, Chris. And then.
They often last 40, even though it's supposed to be 25, I mean, just to be honest.
Well, because we have good.
Most schools have.
They have good methods, right? But, but then the cost, we know a cost at this point? Because I think, I mean, for me, it's gonna affect this conversation all the way through. I know, so life expectancy, 25, 25 into 100,000 is X, so.
Well, they've gone, yeah, in a decade, they've gone from $30,000 to about $120,000 in cost. It costs about, today it would cost about $15,000 to relocate them, 15 to 20, if you wanted to actually make them relocatable classrooms.
Recently, Ron. Ron, what you're talking about are the relocatable classrooms, not the modular classrooms that like went in to Bellby-Santa Fe?
Yeah, those, I would take those completely out of your mind. They become permanent. There's modular building, like they're building all over the state, they're building modular.
Right.
Set with a crane, no wheels is the answer there. Not, not particularly transportable, moved in one time. So we have, just Bellby-Santa Fe, to my knowledge, is the only place we have those.
And so compare that to their cost of a permanent classroom over life expectancy.
Oh, if you figure a thousand square feet, a permanent classroom today is probably $500,000 a unit, maybe more. That'd be 500 bucks a foot. And a relocatable is still about 100 and, well, you have to, the cost to set them. So you're probably, probably half of that for a relocatable.
Okay, and then, so 500,000 over 100 years, I guess, I don't know, some schools.
They can, they can last a very long time, yeah. Depends on, then it gets into maintenance, aggressive.
All right, thank you.
So get kind of a nutshell in terms of their conclusion recommendations, right? What they're seeing is that you're gonna see some growth in students because of transitional kindergarten. However, due to lower birth rates over time, you're gonna see, you know, almost a decline from that standpoint. So really, level enrollment is what they're predicting based on, you know, the information that we got. So again, kind of, you know, they go through it, so the district should plan, you know, for TK kids, right? And again, when we look at transitional kindergarten throughout this, the reason why, again, we do this, it's looking at, you know, are, do we need to change district boundaries? Do we need, are, there's some schools gonna need more classrooms than others because of this report? Or, you know, what types of effects, right? The board has seen a new facility master plan where it actually, Mr. Buckman, talks like what they would. If you look at the numbers, they have kind of a, this is what it would cost with portables, this is what it would cost with permanent buildings, right? And those costs right now are pretty dramatically, you know, gone up a lot over the past few years. So, so again, they, they look at that TK, because TK classrooms in particular need to be bigger. They need to have a bathroom. For the most part, they're supposed to tie into the playground outside, right? They become kind of a, it's a different facility. So often like our TK or our kindergarten classrooms, that's, that's the ideal classroom setup, facility setup for those rooms. So again, that's a part that will, where this kind of demographic report will transition into our facility master plan planning as well, right? In terms of what our schools need.
Brian, so can I follow up just on, sort of, something Mark was talking about? When we think about TK, what you're talking about right now, it reminds me of that, that old, you know, the meal through the snake, right? You know, that we have, we're gonna have this, this large group of new kids coming in, which we are TK kids, who will flow through the snake, which is, which is, you know, they're 12 years, 13 years of education with us, actually, now 14 years of education with us. But everything on either side of it is gonna be a little bit, is gonna, is gonna be smaller than that bulge. And actually, through the front, you know, the, the following part of that's gonna be even less, right?
Yes, okay.
So we, so, I don't know how you do this. Do we have some kind of estimate on what the T groups coming in? What that, the size of that group?
Well, I mean, I'm assuming it's gonna be the same size as our kindergarten group. So they've, they've looked at that here.
Yeah, the growth rates are down in our county, dramatically.
And that's what they've accounted for that in, in numbers.
Does it have the same sizes as our kindergarten coming in, right? It's probably, probably less.
I mean, whatever our kindergarten numbers are now, which are part of those lower birth rates.
Right.
You know, so could those both go down over time? Potentially, yes. But if we have two kindergarten classes, I mean, again, I'm assuming, especially if we offer a full, full-day program to parents, I'm assuming that our parents are going to, you know, over time, are gonna learn about it, will, will want their kids to go to that program, for the most part. So if you have two kindergarten classes of five-year-olds, you're probably gonna have two TK classes on campus, so.
But, Ryan, isn't there, and I could be wrong about this, but aren't there class, aren't there class size requirements different for TK than other grade levels? And so, it's a, yeah, it's a smaller number, isn't it, like 10 or 12 or something like that?
Yes.
And then our kinders are what, about 20, 21, something like that? So that, that could have an impact too, right?
Wait a minute, are TKs, we have classes, TK have 20 over 20.
Well, I believe, I thought that, I thought the rule, the new rules for TK was that the class sizes were supposed to be small.
No, I mean, it's an adult, that's for fit.
So it's an adult-to-student ratio?
Okay, so it's an adult-to-student.
So, so if there's 24 TK kids in that class, there has to be two adults.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the numbers? Okay, thank you.
So it should be the same, right, in terms of the kindergarten classes and, you know, that we have now, right?
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
They don't have the same, the TK will have that, there's, you know, and again, the governor right now says 12 to 1 for this first couple of years. They would like it to be 10 to 1, but, you know, we'll see what the reality of that is. And of course, there are credentialing requirements for TK teachers as well, a number of ECE units, as well as for the aides. They're supposed to have a number of ECE units, which is like education, you know, elementary education credits that.
Early childhood.
Early childhood credits that they're supposed to take. I honestly don't think there're gonna be enough people that have those, you know, early education credits or have that, you know, for aides as well. And so, you know, I can't imagine that the state's gonna be able to hold that at this point. Maybe in the future, work forwards a type of thing, but it'll be interesting to see how those requirements are backed off because of this full implementation tactic throughout the state of California, right? There's not enough people that will be able to fit that need.
So, so in our discussion, the thing that was really dramatic for me was the bathroom. The need for the, I know we're talking facilities, but I think it, that it's already addressing it. That each TK bathroom, of each TK classroom actually needs its own bathroom? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a huge impact, so, okay, thanks.
So I have a quick question. We're talking like a sort of each end now, because.
Yes.
This doesn't address the potential conversation about moving sixth grade to Laguna.
Right.
And it also doesn't address the potential conversation about more, perhaps someday, preschool at some of our campuses, a little earlier than TK, which I know has not been discussed a lot, but it has been, you know, raised before. So there are some facility, you know, continues to be a facilities conversation that could be, with declining enrollment, you know, offset by the ability to consider offering additional adjustments along the way.
Yep. So the other part too is, again, this is a demographic, we're talking a lot about facilities right now. This is, this is kind of a facility conversation, because at the very end, it talks about the number of classrooms you have, and we'll talk about that. But, but that, this is really just, they're focused on, hey, student population.
Number to.
Where are kids moving in? Where are the houses? What are birth rates? How many kids can the district expect to have over the next 10 years? That was their focus. And then what we do is we take that facility master plan, looking at what they've told us, right, and we, we meshed it, right? We make sure that, you know, that they, they meet each other. So are, you know, do we expect to have 600 kids at CL Smith? So we're, hey, we're gonna have to add classrooms to that, or we might have to change boundaries long-term, right? So those are the types of things that come out of having both of those documents, both the facility master plan as well as this demographic report. Mr. Buckman?
Yeah, I just, I'll clarify. I get that we may have more students to feed, but Eric, I thought I heard something somewhere that the state was gonna go all ADA, that, and now it's not even, you know what, it's not a question anymore. Is there totally talking about doing away with ADA? Never mind, appreciate it.
Yeah, Ms. Frams.
Yeah, so throughout the, you know, going back to the demographic focus, the overriding or overarching thing that I kept hearing was, number one, birth rate declining, and it's not a one-to-one. I mean, you made that big point of, you know, what we refer as, it's not a one-to-one in enrollment at our school. That may be curious as, but, as to why. The other thing was the type of housing, you know, they had that old demographic type of housing that was driving students in our population. And even though we have tremendous another development, so as we move this especially along, that will kind of be, you know, interesting to hear.
Yeah.
Those specifics.
And again, what, the reason why I like this and why it was good for us to do a demographic analysis is all getting, oh man, over by, you know, Cinchimer School, that, all those, I see all kinds of kids, there's families everywhere, right? And so it's good to, okay, we'll step back, right? Let's, let's have a group like this actually look at student populations and birth rates and the reality of what we think we're seeing, right? So versus, you know, so these low-income houses that are 750,000, there's not a lot of young athletes moving into those, right? So, but to the same extent, I also don't wanna make my own assumptions about that and then have a bunch of families move into the, to those homes, right? So that, it's an interesting dynamic, right, that, you know, again, we continue to watch. Every single year, I do the enrollment, we look at the number of kids who signed up for kindergarten, right? We, you know, we plan, we do those things, so we, we adjust it, just like we do our budget. But this was just a nice, you know, looking at all the residential development coming up, to be able to see it, where is it? What do we anticipate? And again, like I said, as we go through this, these are the things that are listed now that they, they looked at, right? So these are the things, when they put together this report, those, these are kind of the key areas that they focus on.
I wanted, I wanted to say, Brian, I think this is the third demographic study I've read something about for. This is far and away the most extensive one.
Good.
And I really, I really appreciated the level of detail on this.
Good.
One thing I did want, and I'm correct with my thinking, it's wrong, on Mr. Pinkerton, but, you know, even though there's no development in Los Osos, because we all know the issues, but there's not gonna drop in enrollment at this school zone, you know? So it's almost that, there are families moving in because who's leaving?
Potential, right?
They're down for places, so it's, that's a kind of a, you know, I think it's another counter moment looking at. It's not necessarily development, but shifts of where those families are kind of moving in, like that.
What I've, what I've seen, and again, I've been in my position now, this is my ninth year. What I've seen is that there's, there's like a roller coaster of enrollment that happens, in particular on the coast. You know, they'll have, they'll, I mean, Monarch Grove will have three kindergarten classes one year, and then barely have enough for two the next year, right? It just, it, it's kind of, kind of an interesting dynamic versus kind of a stable, you know, number of kids on a constant basis. And so they have dropped some, is what I will tell you, right? So they, you know, Bewa, Del Mar, Monarch Grove, in particular, those three schools have dropped since I've been in my position. I do think that by making Bewa the dual immersion school and keeping those kids that were going to Pacheco on the coast, it does help the coastal enrollment. So I will tell you that, right? So in that, right now, we're in the kindergarten first grade, is it second as well, or just? K1, so far, right? So we'll see that change over time, because we still have those second through sixth grade kids that are going to Pacheco, right? So eventually, those kids will stay on the coast and will keep their enrollment. Because you, we, you know, there are issues when you get too small, right? There's just economies of scale things that happen, so, you know, we don't want those schools to get too small as we go through because then there's, it just opens itself up to, again, that roller coaster of enrollment, combo classes, because you only, you know, you have 30 kids in first grade, and you're, you're not gonna have, you know, two 15, classes of 15, right? You're gonna end up having a combination class. And so, so again, having those kids stay on the coast, I think does long-term help. We also see a lot of those Pacheco kids end up going to Laguna instead of going back to Los Osos Middle School. So that, you know, over time, that whole thing will change, right, as kids stay on the coast and they go along instead, you know, that, that transition.
And so, one of the, one of the demographic things that I saw in here was, it looks to me like CL Smith and Monarch Grove are like, over 40% of the kids that are in those boundaries are actually going outside.
Yeah, so we'll get to the, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I just want to say, the number that kind of surprised me the most, because it's surprised me over time, has been the declining, the number of, the declining enrollment at Del Mar and Moroel, you know, when, when we closed Moroel.
Right, yeah, it was a big school.
It was a big school, and up until a couple of years ago, we had close to 500 students at Del Mar. And it's been, but it's been a rapid decline in enrollment at Del Mar, which this is pretty surprising to me. So do you, I mean, I think they'll, they'll look at that, but is this, is this kind of what we're gonna get on the, on the coast? Is this stable, this stable enrollment as opposed to more, you know, more of a roller coaster?
Again, I think it's going to increase over the next few years as those Pacheco students stay, right? On the coast, so you, you should see some numbers grow in terms of those three sites, right? But, I mean, these are the current numbers right now, at, at the time of this report, of course. And so you'll see, right, I mean, yeah, Del Mar, 308, that's, that's low, right, at this point, so. And then, of course, with the addition of TK, you'll see some numbers, right? And what, what they're saying is long-term, it's gonna average out, like you're still gonna have 308 kids, it's just gonna be TK to five, right? Like that's, they think a lot of stable enrollment when I look at that, that moderate enrollment report. Ms. Frams?
Yeah, this, now, this, this was confusing to me, just only because what I noticed is that for, you know, our schools that have TK, you know, the enrollment was included, but those students don't necessarily stand at that particular school, right, so.
Yeah, they don't even, some of the kids that are like the TK program at, at, again, like Los Rancho's.
Right.
They don't have a TK program this year.
Right, so what you're saying is, is these numbers are difficult to interpret because the TK is a true reflection of that school, and then for our schools that have preschools, they're not included in this school.
Yeah.
So it's hard for me to kind of look at those numbers, because it's not a true, if we were just to look at first, or I guess fifth, because, or sixth, that would be the true enrollment of what the schools are. So that's, it was a little bit hard for me to look at.
Okay. You've got the district map itself, right? You'll see, at times where you'll see, you'll see some, you know, they'll, they'll actually have the students part of this, right? They'll come into it, into those maps, and you'll see some of the dots are outside of our district boundaries. And so just for the board to know, so we, we have, we have our, some of our staff have students that we allow to come to our school district, right? Transfer in, we have some district transfers, yet maybe a student has been with us through ninth grade, and we, we allow them to stay at San Luis Obispo and finish their high school ride. We also have some special education students that come to us from other school districts, and those districts pay us for those students to be part of our program. But I just, as you go through this, and you see kind of those dots outside of the area, that was something that Mr. Buckman had brought to my attention as well, just so you know what those are. So again, this, this is kind of historical trends, right, in terms of numbers. You know, pretty steady overall, right? I mean, like even with the, even with the decline after, after the pandemic aspects, and then when you, when you. And then when you when you look at this and you think about the amount of development that's happened in San Luis Obispo in particular, right? I mean, it is kind of shocking that there's, I mean, it really is level. Um as we go through this, you'll see the reason why is um a lot of that growth in people is over the age of sixty.
Or or under the age of.
And then we also have this eighteen to twenty nine, which is a viable product as well, which is the growth of the number of Cal Poly students in our area, right? Yeah, that's right.
So this chart is actually a good one for me on this question. This chart goes all the way back to twelve thirteen. Some of the charts go to twelve fifteen, some of the charts start at twelve twenty twenty one. I I found it sort of distracting.
Yeah.
And with this chart, with this chart, yeah, anyway, just, I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah.
So this is.
I mean, if we started at sixteen seventeen or eighteen nineteen, we see a declining enrollment. Well, it's really different.
Because I tell you what, I think when I first got on board, there were about ten thousand students.
Yeah. So so just so from a perspective, when you look at this, looks pretty stable. But if you were to pull it back and start it, so this is why the base year for me starts to be kind of interesting. If you pulled it back to seventeen eighteen, there's a it's the picture would show a steady decline, and that would be what sticks in your mind.
Well, what's what's happened in particular, and I know, you know, I know this because I do the staffing, I do the enrollment part.
That's not for you.
We've grown, we've grown at the secondary level, in particular, San Luis Obispo High School, over the past five, six years. And we've declined at the elementary levels, is what's happened.
Because the.
So we've, so we're just getting more kids in ninth grade, so maybe, you know, private school students are choosing to come back to us um at some point, right? But but that, you know, and I know that for a fact because San Luis High has grown, I mean, they've grown.
What is that?
Five hundred students over that eight years since I've been in this position.
Sir, is that attributed to the graduation, you know, the just that bubble moving through? That bubble, that that growth?
No, no, these are students that aren't ours.
Oh, they're cons.
So let's, you know, we have four hundred students going from Laguna to San Luis, but San Luis starts off the year with five hundred thirty students. So where did that hundred and thirty kids come from?
Do we know?
Right, so we're, I mean, we're just, you know, and and is, can that be attributed to just a veteran educational product? And so people want their kids to go, and so they sign up and they move from their private school because they, you know, there's a good reputation, they want your kid to go finish there. Right, I think that's, that can, that's a big part of it, right?
I would guess too that uh the new houses being built because of the cost, it's older families that are moving in. So they're more likely to have high school students uh as opposed to elementary, because a young family can't afford our housing. So the other question I can, and Ryan, I I read this, I don't find it. Of our student base, is the income level of a hundred kids, is it stable? Or is the, is it growing on the lower income scale? That won't affect facilities, but it'll affect the program.
So we are um what I, our Title One, right, which is our economically disadvantaged free reduced lunch numbers, right? Um has has been pretty stable, dropping a little bit over the last couple of years. Um you know, we'll see what happens with that. In in particular, we had the rough year with the pandemic because we didn't take applications, right? And I mean, and now that we're giving free lunch to everyone, it's been less of a push. So that said, we have a new new process where we can do it through Ares online with parents. It makes it much easier for them to fill out the income verification form instead of the old form they used to do. So um so we'll see how that goes, but I would say it's dropping some, not dramatically, but some. Um we are losing EL families, which is in this report as well, so we are losing ELS uh over time, you know, through this. And again, that's part of this that that you'll see. Our special education numbers are rise.
It's, yeah.
Which will be, which we'll we'll get to as well.
So, Ryan, the.
Yes.
The impetus, I guess, for families to um fill out the documentation so that their children could receive free or reduced lunch. It it's the impetus is no longer there because we're feeding everybody and we did through COVID.
Mm-hmm.
And we are currently. So do you think that that contributes to the reduction in people who are self-identifying?
I don't know, I don't, you know, I don't know for sure, right? I'm not positive on that. There there's still a lot of benefits at the high school level in particular for students to to fill out that form, you know, whether it's for college applications, whether it's for an AP, um you know, test exemptions, right? Things like that, so there's still some some positive things that come out of doing it, even though you don't have to do it to get free lunch anymore. Um we are seeing our numbers at the high schools rise, actually. So that because kids are eating now and a lot more kids are eating and liking the food, um that they're doing it. And and again, we, by doing it through our Ares system, instead of the old form that they had to get and fill out, bring back, you know, now they just, hey, when you enroll your student, you just do it. So I think that helps, right? Because it's um, you know, the parents do it under their own household, right? There's not, there's not really this, you know, uh change for handing in your form type of thing, right? It's just, nobody knows, right? You just do it on your own, you you answer the questions that are are part of the enrollment process, so we'll we'll see how it goes. This was the first year we did that, so we'll see what happens, um you know, the following year and and whether we see that grow or not or how it works.
But Ryan, isn't it also important at the elementary level because of Title Three funding that it's.
Title One.
I mean, Title One, I'm sorry, but it's above and beyond free and reduced lunch.
Yes.
So it's important that.
Yes.
People understand that it does more, gives us additional funding.
Yes.
Above and beyond, you know, so.
It's important to us.
Right, right.
But to the families.
Well, but it the, it is important to the families because their kids will have additional funding.
But they don't understand.
Well, that's what I'm saying is it needs to be made clear that that it's still an important little process to go through.
Yes.
But I think we kind of our elementary schools, they make a huge push.
Yes, absolutely.
They do, so it is, it's not really, it's it's, I mean, they will talk about the food, but they really make a kind of a one to one push and really.
Yes.
Because the school knows how hard those dollars are and so they really, so I think that, I I'm not sure it's necessarily the fact that we're offering free, that we're seeing necessarily that every.
I'm having a hard time understanding you with your math. I'm sorry. Um I don't necessarily think it's, you know, it may be attributed to the number that they're offering all the free meals because I think the schools are really focused and on target of getting those dollars and really making sure and embracing potential parents that might qualify. It it's it's been kind of an ongoing process, I think that each of our schools is doing a real good job about that.
So this chart in particular shows that that growth of the, you see how the it's the the top band is getting bigger over time and the blue band is getting smaller? Well, that's the elementary enrollment dropping, the secondary growing a little bit, right? So that's, it kind of shows you that, again, steady, not gigantic, right? But it's just a little bit of a change in terms of less in, less elementary, more secondary.
Ryan, may I ask a question?
Yes, yeah, Catherine.
Hi, I'm here in the ether. Uh I just, you you mentioned we are losing EL students, and I'm wondering if you can explain where we're losing those students to.
Um I I I think it's just they're they're just not in our, they're they're moving out of the area.
Ah, okay, and we and we know that, it's not that they're moving to another school or another program or it's.
Uh I don't, I don't think so. I I don't think that's, I mean, I don't know, this is just our, just, again, there's a chart on here which I'll show you, which shows the the EL enrollment that's happening, right? We're seeing it, it's it's, you know, you can see it, you know, from the charts, the actual numbers of students that they they pull up. So they just go right up for our student database. Uh I I don't think it's, those families are not, I I I would assume based on that information that they're leaving our area.
I see, we don't do an exit, um you know, essay or question of of these people who are leaving to give us any insight into that.
No, I mean, if we, you know, we we would, we would, you know, transcripts, those types of things would go somewhere, right? So I guess we could lo- look and see, it's not something that we've, you know, that we like detail out where every single kid goes when they leave San Luis Obispo. It's not data that we pull right now, um although we do, right? If somebody moves, we do send their Q file, their information to their new school, but um yeah.
Right, I wasn't thinking of intruding their privacy, I was just thinking that if they want to share something with us, that would be helpful to us, that that would be nice.
Well, I I just, Catherine, I was just gonna comment, I think it's reflective statewide, what's happening, you know, the trend of statewide, the the numbers are down. But I think in our particular um county, it's all, you know, families that have, you know, graduated through our program, we're not seeing a huge influx coming to the area. They're going to other areas, I think, you know, affordability is, you know, a a huge job, but we're not getting families moving into these areas. Those families that were here, we hear, had 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 that bubble, have kind of articulated to our schools, I mean, as best as I can see and they think of.
Well, and I was kind of on that line, I was wondering, originally thinking, I wonder if they're moving to Paso, Atascadero, although those schools. But those districts are experiencing declining enrollment as well, my understanding. So I don't know if they're moving to Santa Maria, I don't know if the numbers are down there, or if they're just moving to more affordable places, you know, are they moving to the valley?
Or are they not coming to California?
Or are they just not coming to California?
So overall, just, I mean, overall, the state of California is losing ADA. And they talked about, you know, this, they talk about that, you know, the state a lot, a lot of the budget meetings I go to, yeah, we're seeing declining enrollment throughout the state in many places.
But it's also, there's also that huge, what you started with was a decline in per.
Yeah.
So on on this chart, I'm sorry, get ready. On this chart, is this the one where it talks about the prepare program?
See, at the very bottom there, so preparers are, that's our eighteen to twenty one.
Is it yours type?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, yeah, Marilyn has a question.
I'm sorry.
Uh yeah, I'm I'm just wondering, and I imagine when we get to the slides that reflect it, you'll you'll discuss it a little bit. But over time, we've seen our um Latino population in the district grow to thirty percent. If I remember what I read, yet we see our ELS declining. And to me, that was um, I couldn't understand why that would be.
But don't you think some of that could be because people who identify as Hispanic are are fluent in English? I mean, they identify as Hispanic, but it doesn't mean they're EL, thinking of Cal Poly professors, yeah.
Which is part of the answer, Marilyn, which is we might be seeing a a shift in our, in the um in our Latino population. Where more and more of our Latino families or or parents are moving here who might not be ELS.
Or English percentage.
Second or third generation, maybe, with Latin, with Spanish surnames. So, right, can you just, there's two, is there two prepare programs in the county, in the district?
So there's, yeah, so we, well, there's preschool, what do they call, what's the special preschool called?
It's PE.
PE?
It's PE, right?
Yeah.
So that's different than preparers, preparers that is special education.
Adults.
Adults, right, from eighteen to twenty two.
Twenty two.
Twenty two. So we have a program right now, it's grown over the past few years.
The the number that I saw is that it tripled.
Mm-hmm. They can see, yeah, it's grown a lot.
And and we have, that's good.
We do.
We do. So you'll see some, I mean, this is just kind of good to look at, right? You you know, in terms of, you'll see some changes uh over time, some schools that were, you you see some impact, right? This is PE, um some of that, you know, in terms of overall numbers there, that that would stand out to me a little bit. Uh Mr. Unger talks about Del Mar, right? That stands out, you know, four hundred nine kids at sixteen seventeen, now three oh eight. So so, you know, Los Rancho's four fifty seven, down to three ninety four, right? So those are things that we'll, again, continue to watch on an annual basis, what happens, you know? Again, this is a projection. It it could change, we could have families move in somewhere or something changed, right? So the those are things that for the board to know, we, you know, this is nice to have, kind of like my budget projection, but you still annually, we look at the numbers and classes and um if you if you, if we feel like we're getting to a point at a school where it's becoming too small, that's something I'm gonna have to bring to you and look at boundaries and potential changes, right, as we move forward. Uh we have tried to shrink Pacheco. So because it was getting too big, um you know, almost taking too many kids at that site for that site. So you'll see that number declining, which helps our other schools with their enrollment, right?
I think the one that 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 stood out for me was Hawthorne and the growth at Hawthorne here. Because I didn't, you weren't here, but when we were considering closing schools, you know, back in early two thousands, Hawthorne, it was high on our list, hundred hundred eighty students at Hawthorne. And now we're looking at three hundred eighty two students with, I think, a little bit of growth continuing out through the years on, you know, on our smallest campuses.
Yeah, we really can't have too much growth on that school site, right?
That's that's the one that could, you know, when I think about facilities, when I think about growth, that's the one that stands out for.
Yes. Yeah.
Um I think it almost.
That will.
Okay, so when you're looking at this chart, help me out, because what I really look, you know, the the funky years are the pandemic years, the nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one. So I went back to the twenty eighteen, and then if you just look at that year, those numbers look really different. You get like some of the schools have almost a hundred drop. You know, the Hawthorne from that number, you look at Hawthorne from that number, it's a minus five.
Yep, pretty stable.
And so you have, if you look at that base number pre-pandemic and analyze, that's how I was trying to look at growth, you know, pluses and minuses. Because it's so hard with that pandemic here to really draw any kind of conclusions, so you know, I don't.
And we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens with the mass, you know, with the mass mandate. And if that goes away, will parents bring their kids back? You know, there's, it it it'll be really interesting to see how this, you know, as we move into hopefully the endemic stage and some of this changes, hopefully, um you know, it's become safer at schools, right? That that it'll be really interesting to see what happens with some of those people that went to private schools.
So so for me, when I look at this, and it says historical enrollment by school, and we've discussed either here or we will, see the intra-district, intra-district, right? Between our school of choice, I think, is what you taught me to say. So is this the number within the the side, school size boundary? Or is this the number that's sitting at the school?
That's the number sitting, yeah, this is the number sitting at the school, we'll get to the point with the number that's actually.
Right, okay, so this, so these numbers are kind of weird to look at.
Yeah.
I mean, we have fifty kids leaving Hawthorne, and about fifty kids leaving CL.
Okay. And and that's that's it, so again, uh in terms of the the free reduced lunch numbers, you could see that, right?
Ryan, I was I was curious about this too, I wrote myself a note. So have we seen, I see we're we're seeing a decline in our free reduced numbers? Or have we seen a decline perhaps in percentage at any particular school? So you know, sort of like either people not filling out their forms or or as an indicator of gentrification? I just, just wondering.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to know. What I would tell you is this year in particular was really difficult. Uh because we went to this new system, we went online, so it was kind of after the fact and tried to get people to log back into Ares to do it, right? Versus next year, it's just gonna, hey, before your kid can come to school in the fall, you're gonna do your enrollment, update your address, do your, you know, any siblings, those, you know, emergency contacts, and you're gonna fill out this in- income form, right? Before our school even starts. So because this year, we're kind of behind the, you know, T P, uh principals were having to to go out. I mean, we went from, I mean, some of our schools that were Title One schools only had like ten percent free reduced lunch. And so but once we pressed and once we asked parents to do it, it dropped, you know, jumped up dramatically, right? To the thirty five, thirty six that they needed to have in order to be eligible. Um so you know, that's a hope that that we'll do that. Or I think it'll get better from that perspective, but you know, I I I do think we're gonna get more parents that will, um we're gonna get more, I would assume this number's gonna go up, I mean, because we're actually gonna have our secondary students do that income form. Versus in the past, I would say that most secondary students didn't turn the form in. And now it's just gonna be part of the enrollment process, so hopefully they'll do it, hopefully we'll get the numbers. And again, that increases the amount of federal funding we'll receive, which then goes to our Title One sites, right? So it's, it could be a positive thing. And and I, you know, I do believe it's higher than the thirty three percent of this year, I want to say we're up to like thirty six percent based on that, that change and that push that we made back in C-Bets October.
So if my my memory serves me right, not too long ago, we had a forty percent SCB population.
It's right here.
Got it, okay, there.
But in particular, where we've seen less numbers has been the secondary sets. Like we know, because those kids were economically disadvantaged in elementary school, and now how how is that number not transitioning through, right? Could change, of course, right, based on income. It's it's actually pretty tough to be economically disadvantaged these days with the, you know, the requirements that they have. So it, you know, kind of an interesting dynamic. So, you know, kind of an interesting dynamic. So Marilyn, this is to your thought, right? So here we are, like you said, we're increasing, you know, a little bit, right, our overall Hispanic, Latino number over time, yet we're losing EL, so that's an interesting dynamic, how, what that means, right? But definitely becoming a little bit more diverse at the school district. This is that English learner number that we talked about. But yeah, dramatic over ten years, right, three hundred less, three hundred seventy less kids. You know, we did have, a few years ago, there was all of that, you know, it's, it's pretty politicized, right? You know, making people, undocumented people go back to, you know, Mexico or Latin American countries, those types of things, right? And there was a really big issue in the state of California that I know the board addressed, and, you know, we, you know, pushed that, you know, we have to be supportive to all families, all kids, of course, right? But, but I wonder, I wonder what that did in terms of families wanting to come to the United States or not, or if it pushed people away, or, you know, in particular, English learners, so I, I don't know, right? But, or is it just housing prices, is it just the cost of living, you know, what are those things? I do know that there are still tons of needs, right, in terms of jobs for people here, so how that's not, you know, I don't know, industry-wise, kind of, what, what effect that's having.
Well, I would think that possibly over the last couple of years as well, just the data collection efforts have been stymied.
Possibly.
Because of the pandemic, so that perhaps as we move forward and things become a little more pre-pandemic times in our abilities to carry on business, that some, that adjustments may be made as we are able to get data again.
And, and again, for the board to know, right, if you didn't know, we have, we have newcomer centers on both at Baywood Elementary School as well as Pacheco, right? So if somebody marks the box that they are Spanish speaking at home, right? Those students are, you know, interviews brought in, so we, you know, we do a, a great outreach effort to get families to talk to them, make sure students have the, the programs and assistance they need, if they need it, right? Some don't, some might, so just so you know, yeah.
I think, I think that, that number of EL also reflects use of technology. So can everybody use Ares? Were they going in and, and, you know, talking and doing something in the site that, so it just, I mean.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say.
You know, I agree with Ellen, I think it's gonna go back up.
Yeah, we'll see, I mean, I would say that parents are doing it, right? So we, whether we're helping them in the office, they're, or, or, you know, they're doing it outside some, some way, it's getting done. So it's, you know, we're, we're working with parents, I mean, as much as we have hotspots, computers at homes now, those types of things. I mean, the, the board has done so much in that effort to make sure that people have technology and resources to, to do it.
But that home language, sure, I did the challenge, you know, that's basically done on a one-on-one basis, so they, you know, have it. So it's, I think the school's really doing the job, they're not depending on computer technology, because people really know, I'm not one.
Thank you, thank you.
So, so the next one, where, I, I can tell you, we're up to about twelve hundred students, special education students now, this year.
Does that trend reflect what, okay, that's the last question.
So, so that's something I would like, like the board know, that Diane's working with Janet, to what does that mean? Is it speech kids, is it, you know, like, what, what disabilities are we talking about, right? Like what, what is this doing? It is a fear of mine, and I've expressed that, right, and we talked about it, because you have this learning loss, you feel bad for kids, you wanna give them interventions, you wanna help them, right? So do you, you know, do they become special education students? So with all of the MTSS and interventions we're doing as a school district right now, that should be the, the focus, right? In terms of helping kids with those types of things. So it's just, we're, we're in this weird place, right, in terms of academics and student law, so this is something we're really gonna have to keep our eye on. You know, in terms of, because this has dramatic effects, right, for the school district, in terms of boss and staffing and all those other things, like the.
I would expect that, given TK coming in, and then given dyslexia screening, that we're gonna see increased numbers of special education, or identified students leave, so I.
But that's part of, yeah, what.
I, I think this, I think this, this trend will continue.
I mean, what age levels are these, are we, you know, when are kids qualifying, when, you know, there, there's just a lot of questions of when we saw this data, kind of, hey, we, we need to check into this. So this, again, Diane and Jan are working on it, you have a staff behind it to kind of pull that information together to share with you.
So one of the notes I wrote, my bad for not knowing this, when we stay special ed, does that include the five oh four kids?
No.
The minor?
No.
Thank you.
Is this trend that we're seeing, how does that compare to district-wide and state-wide?
So we, we're.
That would be.
I would say from a county standpoint, we've, we've always, we haven't been the highest in the county, we've kind of measured, you know, kind of been measured, but, but where we're headed right now, we, we're gonna be a high, I mean, we, we would be higher in the county, right? So that those, that percentage of your population, right, is growing. So that's something that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we need to watch, check, see.
So given like demographics, like school district, and like areas, are they seeing that same trend?
Right now, I can tell you that in the Sefa, they're seeing a little bit of an increase, but like Ryan said, our increase is a little bit higher than hers.
Couple districts, couple districts are seeing a greater, yeah.
And that's what Janet's looking at, she's looking at where are eligibility among schools, among eligibility areas, right? Is it speech and language, is it specific learning disability? She's going through with a fine-tooth comb and picking out that data so we can look at where our areas of need are. And by need, I mean, working with that team, looking at those IDPs, how do they qualify, that type of thing.
Just, just a reminder to everybody, if everybody could please speak up, even though you're masked, so that we can make sure that we catch all comments on Zoom, thank you.
So the next one was another interesting chart that I'd never seen before, so they actually, the state tracks private school enrollment. So we were able to go in and look at that, to kind of see, you know, how many of our students in our, again, in our district boundaries are going to private school, so. Just interesting, right, because this, what I said about kids leaving private school to go to slow high would, wouldn't necessarily make sense to this chart, right? So it's, it's an interesting dynamic to, to see that. And I, I expect with the pandemic, of course, that jump in nineteen twenty, right, number of students, but we'll see how that, if that decline happens. You know, there are some charter school options for kids here, right, we have SLOCA, we, there's a, what's the school in Sunnyside?
Wishing Well.
Wishing Well has grown dramatically over the past couple of years with pandemic, so we'll see. I, I'm anticipating, I'm anticipating those kids coming back to us, so we'll, we'll see how that, how that goes. Again, just interesting information, you know? So though we're kind of staying stable as a group, right, you'll see the actual population of our, of our district is growing, right? So the number of, number of, of, good from eighty-six thousand to ninety-three over that time. This is that interesting age distribution chart, right, so.
Are we past page eighteen?
What's that?
Did you skip over eighteen?
No, I'm, I'm here right now, this one.
Thank you, no, let me see what page, must be sixteen, the.
So this is just population growth, this one?
Pages don't line up. Yeah, okay, numbers.
And so this is the actual, when we look at age distribution population, so this is that.
So if we go back to the, to the one with the growth, and this may be more pertinent question, later? It, it's just, it just appears to me that Cal Poly's growth and the numbers so impact our data. I'm just wondering, are we not at a point where we can somehow, by social security, right, by birth rate? Is there some way, will Cal Poly work with us where we can disaggregate those kids and just get, get them out of our numbers?
For what?
Sorry, I mean, keep them in the bars, because we need the money, but get them out of our data.
I don't know, I, I don't, yeah, I don't know that there's a way to do that or not from, from this. But, I mean, what we know is that we have a public university in our school boundaries, right? So because of that, you'll see the eighteen to twenty-nine, it's very dramatic, right? But you can still see, you know, five to seventeen, so really, you know, if you looked at the numbers, about nine percent of that eighteen to twenty-nine are, are normal families, right, are kids that would be in our area. So it's the other on top of that, right, that makes the thirty-five percent, because if you just, again, you went across, right? And then, of course, like, like I said, you're seeing this dramatic increase in the number of, of, you know, people moving here that are over the age of sixty, right? We know retirees are coming into our area, right, that's happened. So you, you'll see that growth of the, kind of the top in there. Then the next one shows that, again, from the, and this is pulled from the census, right? Yeah, sorry.
Well, no, 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 the one thing is, is that when I look at those, that, that bar graph, when I look at the last three bars, which is, you know, the fifty, fifty to seventy.
Yep.
That accounts for more, or that people, a child there in age.
Yes, yeah, which is why the birth rate's dropped, yeah.
So did, so let me, I'm sorry, Chris, good. So, so, I mean, I just have to say, I, I love the, the lax feeling of a study session as opposed to a meeting where, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, conversation, yeah.
Yeah, conversation. So, so to Ellen's point, can we somehow deduct that percentage as we, as we look across? Is that statistically important?
Why would we deduct it?
The six, the, the six, the fifties to sixties. Because this is, this, this is gonna impact the, the enrollment, and enrollment's gonna drive facilities. So for me, I, I mean, maybe we're too early on the facility discussion, but it was in the back of my mind for a whole time. Well, I'll tell you what would be more interesting than that, I think, Mark, is if we were able to parse out eighteen to twenty-nine year olds, say eighteen to twenty-five year olds, because I'm assuming, you know, at some age around twenty-five, the students from Cal Poly are gone, except for, you know, a group of graduate students, and then at twenty-five, I would think people start entering their, you know, their childbearing years, their fertility, you know, their fertility starts to increase, and they, they want to start having children, so, you know, we might, in terms of our numbers, it might be more looking like, do we pay attention to the thirty, the twenty-five to thirty-nine year olds in terms of population growth? But it's just.
It's probably a balance too, though, right? I mean, we, we probably benefit from Cal Poly kids who want to stay in our area too, and help that population stay, right? Not, not everyone leaves after they graduate from Cal Poly. So, you know, pulling people in to Cal Poly, having them love the area, want to stay, could help us keep, again, keep those childbearing ages that we talked about, you know, when, when we look at it, so it's probably all how you look at it. But, but again, this is kind of an interesting dynamic, this graph, right, because this shows the bands, right? The actual, you know, the seventy plus, and the reason why they do the eighteen to twenty-nine, it's, it's probably what the census pulls, right? And they're just literally, this is what the census pulls, that's why they're using these, these numbers. But, but if, you know, you see that, that, you know, fifteen, five to seventeen number dropping, you know that Cal Poly has increased enrollment over the past few years, as they've added dorms, those types of things, right? So that's an interesting dynamic, see if that will continue to grow or not. But yeah, it's very interesting.
Plus, we're not, we're not talking about a difference of thousands of kids in our schools, it's a matter of, you know.
No, 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 no. It's not changing that, they have.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to make a dramatic change to our school population.
But it, let me ask, so, so a lot of this is based on the number of rooms in a house, occupancy, is that, am I kind of accurate?
No, no, this is the actual population.
The actual population.
Because you're actual people.
So, but we don't, okay, thank you.
So again, then, these are just demographics of our community, right, how it's changed, so that's, you know, in terms of looking at our population, does our school population mirror the, you know, the, the population of the community, right? Household characteristics, you can see that, so again, that income level's rising.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
And, and that, this is pretty dramatic, right, from two thousand to two thousand nineteen, you know, the average median household income was thirty-seven thousand in two thousand, is now seventy-five. And the sad part about that is home prices are probably, while, while that's double, home prices are probably triple since that time, right? So the cost of living has still, even though you see this increase in income, the cost of living is still far out past what the, the income levels that, that we would see, right?
I'm, I'm assuming that like the discussion we had when we were talking about the districting, we, we exclude prisoners that have CMC. Any sounds of that?
I don't know, to answer that question, I'll find out.
And.
Yeah.
On figure sixteen at the top of that last page.
I'm assuming that.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you. I know this, I, yeah, I, I know this is really obvious, but to me, it really jumped out. So we talked about our EL population, we talked about this, the Hispanic population of students, then we look at this chart. It's a number, the percent of students, pretty high, does it, does a percent of students kind of match this number, I can't remember. White?
No, you're, you're.
So the families, right, population by grade, the rest of the city.
So we are at twenty-nine percent, Santos coastal, and what this is saying, the community is seventeen.
Right. And the, and the population of communities. Right, so that's pretty.
So.
So this, so the other thing I had, so this database was from the Census Bureau, right?
Yes.
So when I look at page thirteen, this database come, come from where, because?
That's our, that's our student information data.
Okay, because we disaggregate the data, here, they look at Asian, I'm assuming they're including Filipino? Because when we disaggregate the data, we're separating.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure how they, this, again, the census, I'm not sure how the census data compares to the race.
Okay.
International race breakdown. Um, again, the percent of households with individuals under eighteen, dropping. The actual number of, of people per household has dropped, interesting. Home ownership has stayed pretty low. Which is an interesting dynamic, because to me, it would seem like you would have a lot of people that would hold on to homes, rent them, you know, like there'd be a lot of rentals in our area, right, Cal Poly kids and those types of things. But it, it stayed pretty stable in terms of overall ownership rates.
Can I, can I just put it inside in here? I recently learned that when people are renting to students, when I was growing up, they would rent a thousand dollar lunch for a four-bedroom house, right? What I just recently learned is landlords are now renting five or three rooms. They're renting thousand-dollar house, they're not renting for a thousand dollars a room within a house, just interesting.
If you're lucky.
If, if it's not more, okay. I just, it's just, I can't believe it.
So this, the next one's median, price of a home, right? Again, some of this is just demographic area, not necessarily tied directly to the, to the school district, but they do look at the student generation rates, right, so based on birth rates in the county, those types of things. And then they apply that to new construction, right, that number, to any new homes that are being built, you know, they go through it, so this is.
Ryan, would you be careful if you just call out a page number every once in a while? Because I'm having trouble keeping up with it.
If there's something that, if, if there's something we're missing, yeah, if I'm, if I'm passing over something too fast, let me know.
I appreciate it.
So this is all of the new residential developments coming, right? So it's, it is interesting, like Mr. Buckman said, kind of the location of those, there are a couple of these that were wrong, I'll let you know. And, and I know that because I looked at this map afterwards, and I think they had twenty-eight down as Hawthorne, when in reality, that's Seal Smith, that's the new homes being built behind Madonna Road, right, so there's a couple of things. But yeah, I mean, there's some, some large developments coming in, right?
But could I, what is the, you know, when I looked at that, that graph, I mean, when I, going back to page twenty-five, what struck me as, you know, the number of residential projects, you know, but then when, you know, I started circling, what they attribute to is the greatest grow, you know, I mean, the certain types of housing. And it presents a little bit of a different picture.
Yeah.
So on that same, on that same chart above this one, this was the note that I wrote for myself, and maybe that's what you were alluding to. It looks like the largest amount of new homes, both the first and second, or at least the second, are our smallest campuses. So Hawthorne in particular, you know, I try to picture Hawthorne, and I take every student in Hawthorne, put them on the playground, put them about two feet apart, and I'm not sure there's enough room for every kid to have two, two, two feet, or whatever it is. And I'm not sure there's enough room for every kid to have his two, two, two feet or whatever it is. And that's, I think, somewhere gonna have to deal with. I don't know how we're gonna deal with it.
Well, again, I think on an annual basis, we're gonna have to watch the enrollment at Hawthorne in particular, right? Because that's our smallest school with the, you know, we can add portables to Los Ranchos, we can add portables or classrooms to Seal Smith. Most of our class, you know, we have room at Sitchimer, but Hawthorne is really landlocked, it's, it's a tough camp. So we're gonna have to watch it and make sure. Um, I was, I was fearful of that a few years ago, because we started, we had like three kindergarten classes, I was like, oh, oh, we're starting to see this growth, and then all of a sudden it drops. So it, it's, you know.
But did it drop because we increased the intra, the number of intra district, like a lot of kids went to Pacheco?
Potentially, it depends on, yeah. Where kids go, where they, where they move to.
Okay.
Um, so, so again, this is kind of the breakdown of school sites, right? You've seen these maps a thousand times now with the Voting Rights Act. You know, information that we've talked about, right? Those, those, it just kind of shows you those. Um, you know, this is the plot that has kind of where the kids live.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Just real quick, exactly, the residential development land use, the amount of development we're seeing, some districts, some districts are able to ask for mitigation fees. So like, for example, one of the school districts I worked in, they, this, they rebuilt the school and the city built a park next to it. And it, you know, it alleviated some of the district's costs and it really kind of helped the community.
So what I would tell you, what, what this demographic enrollment report is showing us is that we have plenty of school sites. So there's not really a need, you know, for, for us to force a developer to give us a school site somewhere.
Or.
Uh, this, you know, that's not panning out in this enrollment projection that we're, we're looking at. Uh, so, you know, a lot of times, those mitigations are the result of, hey, I'm building five thousand houses and I'm gonna have two thousand new kids, like Clovis. That's why there's a new high school in Clovis, like every two years, right? They have new high school, new high school, and they do have mitigation, those types of things. But from, from what we're getting from this report, I'm not seeing that as something that would be a force for us. This is that chart that I talked about, some of the, the blue dots are students outside of our area, right? Of course, like Caillouka students, you'll see kind of that, that big blue, um, you know, number there, um, you know, the.
I'm assuming those are high school students.
Those, a lot of that is attributed to, uh, you know, the students that come to us, right? That we have our agreement with Caillouka schools. So that's, which is a positive thing on our behalf. So again, just kind of interesting dynamics, right? The highest number of students.
Ryan, don't we also, is, don't we have a kind of unwritten agreement, or maybe it's written?
We have a written agreement.
With staff that says, if you work in our district, you can bring your kids with you?
Yes.
Okay.
We allow that.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so at the elementary, the highest number of students reside in the Seal Smith school boundary, interesting. The, uh, fewest number, Sitchimer, which has seen a lot of the growth, right? A lot of the newer homes. Uh, you know, of, of course, we knew the boundaries is gonna be higher than Los Socos, yes.
Uh, more apartments in the Seal Smith area, more, more density.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So that would be more.
Yeah.
But, but also, the Seal Smith boundary includes, as you started off with Bellevue-Santa Fe.
Yes.
So, so there, there are more potential kids, but we're losing some of those kids to Bellevue-Santa Fe.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. So I do think that they pulled out those, the Bellevue kids before they got to the six hundred.
Okay.
Just so you know. So I think that when we see six hundred, there's, you'll see a substantial number of kids going to Pacheco, right? So it, it shows you in this chart, it'll show where they go.
Right, yeah.
Uh, but I do think that they pulled the Bellevue kids out before they get to the six hundred number. So this is just our kids, our students, that's what this chart shows, right? You'll see there's no Pacheco, there's no Teach on this, right? So those, those kids are going to those sites.
Oh, so they're not the, so the kids, so the, the kids that, so again, these are not the full, this, are these the full population?
So I think if, if.
Everybody, if everybody stayed home.
Yeah, if you add all these numbers, it would be the total number of TK six kids in our school district area.
Sorry, okay.
Right?
So.
But not a true resource.
So this is where our kids, right now, would go to San Luis Coastal, this is where they're located.
Great, but this, yeah, this is their home school.
Okay.
Yeah, their home area.
Okay, thanks.
So the, the, you know, just make, make sure I'm getting it right. So the, those, these numbers reflect the specialized classes that are at sites in TK and Wishville.
Yes.
Total number of kids.
Yes.
So that it's hard to.
But like at Del Mar, where there's currently three hundred and eight kids at Del Mar, that's because some kids go to Teach and some kids go to Pacheco still, some kids go to Baywood, and some kids maybe inter-district transferred and went to a different school, right? So.
Some of the residents.
Right. So these numbers do not include students who are living within the attendance boundaries, but not going to a San Luis Coastal, you know, like school.
No, I think.
Do you have a trick?
I think these are kids that go to our schools right now.
So this, like, that's what I'm saying. So this isn't Del Mar, three hundred and seventy-seven, and out of that three hundred and seventy-seven, thirty kids go to Wishewell.
No.
This is, this is seventy-seven kids, this isn't the total population, the total population of potential students in the area.
No, they're not counting those kids. No.
So.
No.
I'm confused, because this, hey, Del Mar, it said we're trio eight. Oh, I'm sorry, it said trio eight, where, where's the discrepancy?
So again, it, there's three hundred and eight kids at Del Mar, and of the three seventy-sevens, three hundred and eight are at Del Mar Elementary School, right? And then there's a portion of kids that go to Teach, twenty, thirty kids, and there's probably twenty, thirty kids that go to Pacheco, and there's probably twenty, you know, twenty kids or fifteen kids now at Baywood, so that's how you, those three seventy-seven. So what, what this tells you is that if everyone at Seal Smith, all wanted to go to Seal Smith, they'd have six hundred kids in their school. Right? Like, that's what this is, you know, kind of showing in terms of numbers, right? So in, in some ways, it's a positive thing that we have Pacheco to teach and some of these other, uh, uh, the drop. But, but I think, again, for you, as board members now with trustee areas, looking at your constituency, those types of things, right? This shows you that it's not, you know, it's bigger than, because again, a lot of the conversations at the time when we were doing trustee areas was, well, let's make sure that one school's within each area, those types of things. Well, this shows you, like, you might have four or five schools of, where the parents or kids, even though they're located in your trustee area, those are your voters, but they're actually going to other schools as well, right? So just an, it's interesting information for board members to know, as you, as we go through this process.
So, um, when the trustee area for Smith was moved to encompass a larger area on our final map, I was thinking that's because there were less kids there, but it's showing there's more kids than in the Sin, Los Ranchos, uh, TA.
So it's the voting population too, right? Was a big part of that, so it's not.
Oh, that's. That's what it is.
Yeah, so, so remember that voting, they had to ensure that the actual number of voters, voting age population.
That's what it was, it was adults, not kids, sorry.
Yeah. Yes, right.
I retract the question.
Yeah, so it's, no, it's good, this is, it's confusing, right?
It's really confusing.
It's confusing, so that I think that's why it's good for us to have these conversations, be able to talk about it. Review, you know, that's why this data was kind of like, oh, wow, okay, yeah, we should, we should look at this, right? Uh, again, no surprise, Los Socos Laguna. Um, again, the high school, San Luis High, Moro Bay, no surprise. Pretty stable now, which I'm glad it's low, I honestly, I, I, you know, I don't want them to grow too, too much. Um, so again, this talks just a little bit about migration out of school sites, those types of things. There's some charts that I'd rather show you, this one, in particular, right, which kind of explains it. So again, what you'll see is, um, you know, kind of the, this, this school of residence versus actual school of attendance, right? So Del Mar, um, and again, this looks like they might have taken this at a different day. So this is showing the attendance being three hundred and six students at Del Mar. So two hundred and eighty of those students are in the Del Mar area of residence. You know, there's eight from Baywood, there's one from Hawthorne, five from Monarch Grove, three from Sitchimer, two from Smith, and then seven from other districts. So that's how they got to the three oh six. So you'll see a school like Teach now, and, or Pacheco, and then you can see where the kids came from, right? So Pacheco has thirty-four of the students are from Del Mar, seventy-nine from BP, thirty-one from Baywood. Um, and, and it's, it, this is really an interesting dynamic, because I will tell you, this varies, right? Because, you know, Pacheco is just a lottery system. So they do have ELs, depending on the number of ELs, those kids get into Pacheco. Then they have siblings, right? So there's some consistency, because you're gonna see the same families, right? Stay at Pacheco if they stay with the sibling route, but then there's a whole nother group each year that's, it's just a lottery, right? They could be from any school in our area, in, in our district, and, and so that changes, if it can cause fluctuations. Um, at Teach, we'll see years at Teach where certain schools will have a big influx of fourth graders, and then the following year, it's really low, right? You know, so just, there, there are some fluctuations, things that, that occur, but overall, it stays pretty stable, that you saw from that one chart in terms of, you know, how it all unfolds. Mr. Buckman.
Yeah, so when I look at this, and thank you for making me understand the Pacheco shift, that was really helpful. But when I look at this, the, the, the intra district out of Hawthorne is going, thirty-seven students are going to Bishop's, do I read that correctly? Or is it the other way? The school of residence, the school of attendance?
Thirty-seven Hawthorne.
Yes, yes.
Thirty-seven Hawthorne is going, so, is that?
Top, second line down, did it?
So the school of residence, Hawthorne, if you look at the top, right, it has, so two Hawthorne kids go to Baywood, thirty-seven go to BP, one goes to Del Mar, three hundred and ten go to Hawthorne, sixteen go to Los Ranchos, one goes to Monarch Grove, thirty-two Sitchimer, you know, on and on and on.
So when, so if you go down a little further, thirty-four going to Sitchimer, so what, my concern, my question is, are we looking at, um, a shift of, how to put this, non-SED kids? And they're saying, whoa, I don't want my kid to go to Hawthorne. I mean, that's, that's sixty, that's seventy-seven kids, right? Or sixty-nine kids.
Yeah.
Is, do, do we track it maybe by SED versus non-SED?
No, I mean, we haven't.
Okay, because I'm a little concerned that it's, um, we used to call it white flight, but I, I don't think it's that, I think it's a non-SED.
Yeah. Yeah.
For me, my mind jumped to SED versus non-SED.
So you'll see, there's also some boundary things that occur, right? So, um, again, like Hawthorne gets thirty-two kids from Smith.
I know.
So there's, I mean, there, sometimes you'll see there's actually like the land area or where the kids have to walk to school, or there's things like that, where parents would just prefer for their students to go to the other site. Um, we're, we're seeing that right now with Sitchimer, so a lot of those, um, a lot of those families, it's like, it's literally the housing is right next to Sitchimer, but they're Los Ranchos, and they don't wanna go all the way out to the airport. They'd much rather have their kid right there by to Sitchimer. So they're asking for, um, enrollment, and so what we do is we, um, this is the process, is we have open enrollment, right? If you wanna transfer to a school, you fill out a paper, and then, um, we give that information to the principals, who then, according, you know, with staffing, if they, um, and it, and it can be helpful, right? Because i- if, again, you'll have like a Monarch Grove or, or a school like that, that has a really low kindergarten class one year, it's been really helpful with Sitchimer, I will tell you, because they dropped enrollment, um, to actually take kids. And, and again, we don't want Hawthorne to be all, all the kids who live in the Hawthorne boundary, it would be too big for that school site, right? So some of this is, it, it just works out to probably be better for all schools by allowing some of this, you know, change to happen, um, over time. The principals sit down, they look at it, a lot of time it's family, you know, um, it will be interesting to see what happens with TK. This sometimes happens too, like right now, hey, I'm at the TK at Sitchimer, you know, I really love Sitchimer, I wanna stay here now. But now we're gonna have TK classes at all the schools, so they'll actually be at their site, right? Um, and, and will progress, you know, through their neighborhood school, so it, some of that dynamic, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
So, right, so is, our database is good enough, um, or function well enough to actually, and is it, I don't, is it appropriate to actually see who those sixty-nine kids are and whether, like.
We, we probably could get that in, yes, because this is our information.
Because my understanding from teachers and others, having a mix of SED and non-SED kids is better, right? They kind of bring the rising, whatever.
Okay.
You know, if there's, if there's, I would, I don't know about other board members, I.
Interesting.
Yeah, I would just note, as a point of interest, to me, the disproportionate number of students that are attending Teach from the coast.
And then, we, we have a question from Lena Egan. Before, before I get to Lena, though, hold on just a sec, Lena. Um, it's eleven-thirty right now, I've been trying to say we have breaks about every hour and a half. How is everybody feeling? Because I think we're, we've got a lot more to discuss here, and we still have, you know, long discussion, I believe, but.
Should be quick.
Quickly. So do, does everybody wanna take a break now? Do you wanna wait a little while longer? I, I need to be that, right? What, okay, so let's let Lena ask her question and get that answered, and then we'll take a quick break. Lena, do you wanna ask a question, please?
Sure, um, one thing I would caution against assuming white flight is, is just that it's a family's choice. If a kid, let's say a Cal Poly professor lives outside of, um, their neighborhood school, and they want there to be involved with their kids' education, uh, so they're gonna try, try to have their kid go to Teach. So it has nothing to do with a socio-economically disadvantaged situation or not, it's just that they wanna be involved in their kids' education. The other thing about the demographic analysis that I was wondering about is that the governor is going to try to encourage the CSU system, including Cal Poly, to increase enrollment, um, by year twenty thirty. So that would mean more, hopefully, mean more faculty and staff, and I wasn't sure how that would show up in our projections, as well as on the flip side, with the PG&E closure, because that was, um, high, high, high income jobs, and if those jobs have stayed in San Luis Obispo or if they've left. So those are the three points I wanted to make. Thanks.
It, it, what I would say, Lena, is, I mean, they, they can only project what they know, right? I mean, there's, they probably can't prognost, you know.
Prognostic.
Prognosticate kind of what's gonna happen or not type of thing, um, you know, based on what could happen with enrollment and those things. Which is why, again, this is just a projection, right? Like, we have to remind ourselves, you know, we actually, every year in the, right now in the spring, we do kindergarten enrollment. We get the actual numbers of kids who show up at our doors, right? Uh, then we go from there. So that, while this is good, it is limiting in some way. Just like, you know, my ten-year budget, if you pulled it up eight years ago and you look at it now, is very different, right? In terms of the numbers and years and those types of things, because you, you, we change it as we go. So, um, it is important, I would say, like, like you said, that if these things do come into place, if Cal Poly's gonna grow a ton, if there's things like that, we do need to consider that, um, in our projections and our plan, right, ongoing into the future. So we'll have to see how that, how it goes. So, certainly, do you wanna take a break or?
Yeah, let's take a break. Uh, to, you know, something interesting, Lena, is if there's an increase, a significant increase in Cal Poly, both, um, you know, professors and, 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 you know, what we call classified staff, and again, where are they gonna live? So is Cal Poly gonna build more housing? You know, like, they, they have that housing that they built off of, I believe, off of Santa Rosa Street, you know, right in there. Where, where are those people gonna live? Now, PG&E, I, I, I've gotta say, I'm not that worried about the closure of Diablo, because I think they've shed so many jobs already over the past probably twenty-something years, you know, I think they've probably shed about half their jobs, I think we looked at that. And I think the plant, the plant will have a need for employees for a number of years to come. Now, the, you know, the plant operators, guys in the control room and the gals in the control room, that's a different question. But, but, the, the whole process of shutting the plant down, it's gonna take years, and it's gonna require still employees. Um, Cal Poly is a major driver, you know, we know it's a major driver of, of, uh, you know, I don't know about student population from the, the employees or not, but but certainly a major driver of our economy in this county and in our school district, for sure.
Mr. Ungar, with respect to your question about Cal Poly, in their facility master plan, they did have additional, um, residential housing on, uh, near Slack Street.
Okay, near Slack Street?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean, yeah, up on the other side of Grand, toward, um.
Yeah.
Okay, toward the hill, thank you. That's right, yeah, there was some controversy about that too, wasn't there?
There's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Lena.
And I, I think on the PG&E comment, um, even if those, even if those houses become available, I think it's clear that they're gonna go, either it's the fifty to seventy-year-olds or the pricing is just gonna be huge. I'm not sure if family could afford to buy it.
Lena, how, do you know how many potential houses they're thinking about building over there off Slack Street?
I could send you, I can send you the, um, information. It was part of my original, uh, feedback on the CBRA about trying to keep Cal Poly in the, uh, as a community. It was part of my original uh feedback on the CBRA about trying to keep Cal Poly in the, uh, as a community of interest.
Thank you very much.
So this next one.
So should we take a quick break?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
How do y'all feel, like, ten minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll come back at eleven forty five.
Trying to stand to do it in this.
And Ryan, if you could just go ahead and unmute the boardroom.
Hey, are we ready? Yeah, I'm telling everybody that, yep, everything, yep, okay. Is everybody here? Everybody, right? You know, we need to get started, we got.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so this is, this kind of goes along with that same information, right, just the overall, again, migration of students that, so this is the number of, the percentage of students migrating into a particular school site. So again, as much as we don't necessarily want to see kids leave a particular school district area, it actually is super important for some schools to keep enrollment. So school like Bishop's Peak, you know, certain areas where they, they rely on some of that in district migration, right, to actually have a school there, so um, it's just an interesting dynamic that, again, we just have to continue to watch, I would say, as a school district, right?
So as we, excuse me, is that our, so as we, as we do this in terms of the number of classrooms, when we.
Yeah.
Buildings, I got this, but can we count on them? So can, you know, how much, can Cinchheimer sustain thirty percent?
What I, and what I would tell you back is, um, you know, enrollment's been very stable over the past ten years. So in some ways, it's working out, right, it's, it's working out.
Right.
The, the change of, the, the big change is gonna be the, the Baywood, Pacheco. So keeping students on the coast is gonna have an effect on the, you know, we're declining Pacheco. And then the question really then becomes, okay, so if those, those kids, you know, stay on the coast now, then is Pacheco gonna then pull from, from uh, schools in the San Luis area greater? And what, what impact might that have on those schools, right? That's what we're gonna have to monitor, see how it goes. But as much as we, oh no, look Hawthorne's losing forty percent of their kids, realize, hey Bishop's Peak's losing thirty-three percent of their kids too. Right, Monarch Grove, you know, so it, it averages out when you look at both charts, right? When you compare this one, in migration to out migration, so it's just an interesting dynamic in terms of overall numbers and where kids go.
So then the other, the other flip side is can you sustain it in terms of growth at the different school sites? Can you, what happens when demographics, I don't know, when the report started in twenty-five, twenty-six, when the number of kids figures off? And then.
That, that, and that's why we're gonna have to continually watch this and, and honestly, we, we may wanna do this every five years instead of every ten. Right, like we, I think, you know, they, the hard part is that census data is really a ten-year projection, but they can still do this for our district, right? Cause they use our areas and, you know, information to do it, so uh, it, it may interest us to, to do this on a, you know, again, a more consistent basis, right, maybe every five years, so.
What's gonna be, I just gonna say, what's gonna be interesting based on what you just said is Baywood is not a school of choice. Pacheco is, so is that gonna make any difference would be if we looked at these numbers, again, or is this just, just being silly?
It's, it's interesting though, cause Mrs., this frame actually just looked, you know, cause she was working, you first look, you go, oh wow, there's sixty-three Monarch Grove kids going to Baywood, I, I don't know. But then you look down, you see there's sixty-eight Baywood kids going to Monarch Grove, so the question will be, you know, how will that parent choice go? Will parents decide that they just wanna be at Monarch Grove and not do the dual immersion? Like, again, we'll have to monitor that, but yeah, though we haven't got to the point right now, um, where we've had to turn away any Baywood students, we are, there are limits to the number of kids we're allowing from the other coastal schools to get into Baywood, right? Baywood is, is, again, our smaller school. That, that's why in the facility masterclass, we're looking at, you know, changing that, right, adding additional classrooms to the campus, um, just to have the current growth that we have, um, with that, and so, and there'll be some needs as we push those kids back from Pacheco into the coast, um, at all three sites, is what I would say. So Los Osos, um Laguna, I mean, it's really not a huge change, right, in terms of the number of kids that go from one to the other. Uh, you know, it, this, it's pretty nominal in terms of the numbers. Uh, which is good to see, right? That, that's good, that, that the kids who live in Los Osos are going to Los Osos, the kids who live in the San Luis area are going to Laguna, um, you'll see this is kind of, again, this is for the two Conference High schools. So there's twenty-six San Luis High kids go to Morro Bay, seventy-two Morro Bay kids go to San Luis. I, I think a lot of that is because the kids go to Pacheco, then they go to Laguna, then they go to Slow High. Cause that's their friend group, friend group, that's who they're around, right? So I, I think as the Pacheco-Baywood thing establishes, I'm hoping that that will, you know, decline and, uh, because we would, you know, Morro Bay has room to grow. Slow High, not so much, right, so that, that would be a positive thing for Morro Bay. And from, again, from an economies of scale standpoint, being able to offer more classes, being able to have the same programs, it, it's better for them to have more kids at Morro Bay High. So, but, I mean, these numbers aren't like out of control in terms of one, one group going to one school or going to the other, pretty stable. So you'll see, this is the non-residents coming to the, to our district. Variety of reasons for that, right, we know we have the Cayucus and Cambria or Coast agreements in place where we exchange funds, you know, we do have some special education students who come to our school district, but there are some, you know, transfer students that do attend our school district.
So that comes to about, whatever that number is, let's see, not counting Cayucus, let's see, another hundred.
I would take Cayucus and Cambria out, if you were gonna look at just overall.
Yeah, right, so that means, so that means that we've got another hundred kids, a little less coming where dollars don't follow them.
Yes.
But one of the things, the students that we, the special education students that we have coming from other districts, um, they're, they have not been enrolled as inter-district transfers, is that correct?
Oh, no, no, those are, yeah, but they're still our students, you're probably showing up.
Right, we just wanna make sure. But their enrollment, that their enrollment versus actual San Luis coastal student.
Yes. Yes. I mean, they, they become our students, right?
They do not, they do not write them, they're, we don't write them as inter-district, I know.
They do not become our students.
So I know we have contracts, but they're.
We have contracts with them, they're district center representative to our IP's, so, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, again, this is, this next section is enrollment projections, right? So we've, we've kind of talked about these things, so they've looking at historical projected birth rates, um, you know, additional students by residential development, as well as looking at the student migration patterns.
Okay.
They factor into those.
So, so in the middle of this, it's, the one-year depletion of birth recorded in twenty-twenty-one is the largest since nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah.
Women in California continue to put up having children until later in life. Recent birth rates in California fell from mothers under thirty and rose from mothers thirty and up. Births decreased in San Luis and Spook County in late nineteen ninety after peaking in two thousand seven. Um, two thousand seven births decreased total of eighteen percent through twenty twenty.
So you're seeing, so these two charts really tell the story, right, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
State of California, dramatic, and again, this is across the state, they're talking about this, right? That the, you know, with our ADA-based system that we currently have throughout the state for most school districts, right, that are not, um, basic aid or community funded, um, you know, they're seeing declining enrollment across the board. And, and less, you know, children across the board throughout the state as well, so those, I mean, that's a dramatic decline. Six hundred thousand down to four hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, but then even within our own county, we saw this peak, right, that, that Mr. Buckman just read in two thousand seven, but that again then has declined as well, and, and if we continue to see these demographic shifts of older population versus younger parenting age, uh, that, that should continue to decline. But with more residential housing coming into place, will that keep us at that moderate, you know, stable level, which would, you know, honestly is, would be a hope, right, I would say. There's actual births in our county. So fluctuates some, right, but overall pretty stable at five hundred mark. Uh, you know, we, we do have those, those years like two thousand ten to fourteen where it's like, like, wow, where'd all these kindergartners come from? Right, and so that, those things happen, um.
I wonder if that had to do with the, you know, the twenty-eight A, you know, the, the housing, you know, prices declined because, and then people kind of moved and.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, yeah. It'll be interesting to see what the pandemic did, right?
I think it's interesting also that on, on chart forty-four, age fifty-six.
Uh-huh, that's this one?
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so this is an interesting one, right, so this is the actual population of students, right, based on births in our county versus the actual number of kids enrolling in kindergarten. So, um, you know, normally it looks, you know, so what this shows to me is that you're, you're seeing a little bit of influx of, um, you know, parents choosing private options, right, that's what you're seeing in some of those, those areas. I, I don't, I honestly, I don't, I don't think that we have a lot of parents just not having their kids go to school when they're five. Like just opting out of kindergarten, cause it's not mandatory, right, even though they're about to make it mandatory. Um, I don't, I don't see that as the problem, but we, you know, with the fluence, with other things, are they choosing other options? Um, uh, it'll be really interesting to see if, if, you know, when we go to full day, okay? Will we pick some of these people up, cause did they choose that option because of childcare?
Yeah.
Right, or those types of things, right, so that, it'll be interesting to see how that potentially change, this number changes. Does that red get closer to the actual, uh, percentage of students in the future?
So Ryan, I, quick question, and I'm not asking anyone to get any information from me, it's just asking if we have any idea. Um, do we have any idea of kids not attending, we keep talking about private and charter school options, number of parents who are homeschooling their kids, who have chosen that?
I'm hesitant.
Cause I think that's become more popular in recent year, even pre-pandemic. I mean, I have neighbors who are choosing to homeschool their kids and.
I'm assuming that's in that private school data?
Anyone who's been to a private school. Mm-hmm.
But I would have to ask and find out, because.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I'm just, it's just out of curiosity, so I don't want anyone to.
I'm assuming, cause you know, when you're homeschooled, you still have to be part of a group, right?
Or you're supposed to do the affidavit.
Right.
Right, you still do.
That's what we get after.
You do the affidavit, you would still like be, you know, chartered somewhere or counted in some, you know, probably, I would assume that that's the private school, you know, like didn't have that in school, but it's an interesting dynamic.
Yeah, no, I'm just guessing, cause I, I run into more parents recently.
Well, especially recently.
Who are homeschool, well, I've run into them recently, but they've been homeschooling their kids for the past several years. So I just, our paths are crossed, and so I'm just, just based curiosity, don't get any trouble.
Well, I'm sorry, that, I, I, I would be interested in the data if it's, if you can extract it, nothing else, it's interesting. We have the data, it's just a spreadsheet, I hope, so I don't, it's, it's a better enrollment issue.
I think, I read this article in Edweek, and they really talked about, um, about the boutique, this schools that are coming about and, and there's kind of odds across the country that people are, so it just, to, to keep our eye on that, if that becomes a trend here or not, and we have great schools and great teachers, so, but is that? Boutique.
So again, this is the actual, you know, ratio burst to enrollment. Um, thi- this is a little bit in the weeds probably in terms of, you know, data sets for us to look at, but it's, you know, it's an interesting dynamic. So we'll, it'll be, again, at offering the, the full-day TK and full-day K will be very interesting to see. You know, it's, I, I just think it's gonna be a much, a much more, um, positive option for parents, right, if, especially if they have older siblings that are going to the school at the same time as now they're TK and not having to pay for childcare, right? And, you know, we, we will of course have a fantastic program that is great for kids, so it'll be really interesting to see how that, how that goes.
Yeah, I'm, so, parents are trying to hear about the full, full-day option. There's a, a woman that I know that's on the patient, Sierra Miss the hospital is working three jobs to support the childcare in Olivia, and so at least eliminating childcare for her, you know, maybe she can give up.
Yeah.
I think, I think you're right, it's gonna be a very interesting option.
Eve, did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
No, well, I didn't, thank you.
Okay.
When did we start TK in, I'm sorry, in this district, when did we, when was our first TK cohort, was it like a?
Well, preschool, we added preschool as part of this initiative, right?
Seven years ago, eight years ago, nine years ago.
Yeah, so when, when they, they closed all the, county closed their preschool sites, then board voted to add preschools at our schools. And then TK came soon right after that, um.
Are we starting off with three, and how many TKs do we have now?
Yeah, I wanna say we have five now, five now, and three preschools. And so next year we'll have nine TK classrooms. The age is moving from December to February second. So again, this is just kind of some graphs about migration that we've talked about a little bit, right? Um, so these are the actual enrollment projections now, we're getting into the kind of the nuts and bolts. So on low enrollment projection, they would see us dropping from, you know, our current seventy-three, seventy-eight down to, you know, approximately a hundred kids over the next ten years, right, to eight years. The moderate one is the one that we'll probably focus on for the most part, you know, cause it's kind of that in-between, unless, again, annually it changes, but this would be one where we kind of keep enrollment, maybe grow a little bit over this time period, mostly due to TK enrollment, I would say. And then the high projection would be one, of course, that we would really have to pay attention to. And that would be, you know, one where we grew by a thousand students, right, if, um, over that same time period, so. I, you know, again, on an annual basis, we'll have to watch it, we'll see, you know, are, are the numbers coming in as projected or not? And then, you know, do we redo this projection again in five years, do we look at it? Uh, will be critical things for us to look at, but from, from a planning standpoint, I think we should plan for the, that moderate enrollment study.
Cause you know, what's interesting to me is when we do the budget, you work with this, the, the lowest sort of number that you can sort of find, sort of three percent a year, and so maybe we grow more, maybe we grow less.
Yeah.
And this type of thing, it looks like we're gonna work with the moderate projection.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't know, it just.
And I'll, we, so to, to, to compare that, we would be going off the high projection there. That would be our focus, would be the high projection.
Okay.
Right, so, I, I don't, I think again, we'll have to see, I mean, if we're, all of a sudden we're seeing numbers, you know, going higher, then yeah, we may have to look at the higher projection.
Thank you, I didn't get that.
And then this goes to the, in terms of enrollment, what does this mean for those particular school sites? Again, based on the current migration patterns, based on numbers, you'll see again, pretty stable overall, right? Um, Hawthorne would be the one that I would be the most concerned about, based on this number when I look at it. Because they really just don't have the space, right, there's, there's just not enough room on that campus. So we'll, we'll see how that, you know, if this comes true there, what we need to do.
Uh, is it possible of purchasing devices around it? Can you use a car?
Yeah, I don't, not, probably not that so much, but this would bring, this, to me, when I look at this, this means boundary change. So for, for us, we'd have to literally look at probably the school boundaries for that site and look at, could we change them a little bit to have some of those kids go to, you know, cause you, you want, it isn't, you know, what, the reason why I'm sure the board at the pass has not talked about closing Hopper, cause it's a neighborhood school, right? It's a lot of walking, you know, there's not a lot of busing there, so that's a positive thing. Um, and, you know, the, the current, um, demographic or area for Hawthorne, as we spread it out to where currently where they're now developing, some of those might be better off to be like a Cinchheimer, you know, it's actually closer to Cinchheimer than it would be for kids to get to Hopper. So those are, you know, things we'll have to consider, I would say, if this does come to fruition in terms of overall numbers.
Cool, but if we were ever to consider, if we were to just consider moving sixth graders to Laguna, that would help, will we be?
Definitely.
If we take four fifty-three and divide by seven, that gets sixty-five students or so out of there.
Yes. Absolutely.
So.
Yes, that is the one thing I think, even with, in talking with Mr. Buckman about the, the higher enrollment projection, I think, you know, that, moving sixth graders to Laguna is, um, you know, that is our relief valve.
It's.
Right, in terms of looking at overall demographics. Um, but again, that's, that's looking at from a projection standpoint, there's also a whole educational, you know, need or desire potentially, right, to, to have that program, you know, moved as well, right?
Sure.
So it goes both ways, could assist. Uh, in terms of, so the, the next part just really looks at facilities. Um, you know, for this, I would, I would be careful of using this facility aspect of it, you know, they do it for us because when we look at state facilities, those types of things, but, um, what, what they don't take into consideration when they look at like classrooms spacing, you know, they don't take into effect that we have an I innovate classroom, that we have, um, an MTSS reading tutoring classroom, that, you know, we have schools that have a PTA room dedicated to them. We have, you know, so there's other things that go into just a strictly classroom count, right? So just, as you look at this next section, just remember that as we go through, right? There's, there's more to just an empty room, uh, in terms of how we, you know, how we look at the number of classrooms on the campus versus the number of classrooms we'll, we'll need. Again, we may have classrooms at our schools right now, that we have enough rooms, but they don't need the TK need. I mean, I've been around, I've walked every single campus, met with every single principal, looked at their facilities, and we have major needs for that program at all of our sites, right? Uh, you know, both from a kindergarten perspective and some, and then the addition of TK, um, really, there's gonna be some, some changes that are gonna be needed, so.
Yeah, I can't remember if this is true, but is, is there some kind of state regulation on the ratio of kids to square footage of playground, or is that up to the district?
There is.
There is, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Right. So yeah, a lot, oftentimes it is like a recommendation, types of things, right? So they have to be careful of being too linear, I think sometimes we'll do it.
You can get on the CDE website, maybe those ratios to bathrooms, to playgrounds.
Yeah, definitely, and whenever you modernize a campus, those things get kicked in.
Yeah.
Right, so those are definitely things to consider.
So they then do become, yeah, for, for their consideration.
Try to accommodate it, if you can.
So again, with these next charts, when you see this target capacity, um, just realize that that is not, that, that does not take into all programs into account, right? That would be using every single classroom for a classroom.
So I think.
With kids, right, based on a twenty-one or thirty-two ratio, right, so, so twofold. One, we have far lower than twenty-eight to one or thirty-two to one in our elementary classes. Um, you know, and, and then on top of that, like I said, not every single room on our schools is dedicated to classroom, to be a classroom. So it could be.
So the, the, so when we get back to that chart, page sixty-six, um, and it says rooms not loaded, does that mean that they are vacant rooms, or they not, they're not?
So that's why.
I know you were leaving for that, so where did they come up, and who did?
So they literally just walk the campus, so again, they're looking at it, they don't care about I innovate room or any, that's not, that's their job is to count the actual physical number of classrooms on a campus and use that as the, this lowest level denominator, right, of looking, and then looking at, again, for instance, you know, we could, probably the targeted, um, enrollment at like Hawthorne is like five hundred and seventy-five or something, right? Even though realistically, um, hang on, I gotta put it. But that's based on really high numbers of class size.
Yeah.
Another thing, so it, it's not.
What's this class size based on?
Um, what do they have at the top, I believe it's twenty-eight to one.
Twenty.
And then thirty, uh, thirty-two to one per fourth through twelfth grade.
Ryan, if I'm correct, it, it does have to do with state reimbursement.
Yes.
A grade deal to do with it, because the state says, hey, you've got plenty of classrooms, no money. So that's important to remember.
So I, so I'm unclear what rooms not loaded means, so they walked past a classroom, this is what I envision, they walked past a classroom and there were no kids in it.
And I innovate room would be a room not loaded.
Okay, so then they.
There's not a physical class that is dedicated to that space. Even though it's a classroom space that we use.
Okay.
A reading teacher, you know, two reading teachers in a room, that's a class not loaded, there's not a classroom that's assigned to that space.
Or some of our sites have to censor the rooms.
Yes, exactly.
So basically, so they, so they added that number to the total, I just wanna be sure, they added that number to the total, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Basically, they take the student population and divide it by what, twenty-eight or something?
The number of rooms, yeah.
And that tells you how many rooms you need, and if you have, so if that's ten, and you've got twenty, you've got ten excess capacity. So they don't care about programs, just can't you put a full class in that room?
And so some of that is, again, when, when they, cause this group also helps us like go for state funding or other things, right? So they have to look at it under this perspective, because this is the perspective that will either get you that money or not, right? This is what they have to break it down to, the state doesn't care if you want to have an I innovate room. Right, they, they see it, they see it as a classroom space.
Cause they're not gonna pay for it.
So it's just, again, for that type of funding, if we were gonna go for certain types of funding, right? That's what they need to, that's what they need to know and need to look at.
Well, if you go to poorly funded schools, every classroom is full of twenty-eight kids, every one of them.
So, so if we went for a measure, this, this number might come back to bite us, right? I mean, with thirty-eight empty classrooms is what this looks like.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
You might have just, I mean, this may be something.
If somebody, if somebody misinterpreted or went to this off, off the side, but no, I mean.
Okay.
And then what I would tell you is this is, just because you also have classrooms, doesn't mean that they're modernized.
Well, yeah.
Doesn't mean that they're able to even have occupancy, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, you know, this is simply looking at the number of classrooms versus the number of kids.
So what it really means is you have a higher need of funding than you do children, that, that, you know, quantity of kids. In other words, if you've got twenty classrooms and kids fill ten, you still need to modernize the twenty.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Right, right, so.
But, but for some of those.
I'm more thinking about replacing portals, in my, or whatever we're calling it, that's, that's where this comes, you know.
I don't know if we, do we have a study that shows how many?
I mean, you, you can just walk the side, right?
Right, right.
Again, that, it becomes, it becomes wishy-washy, right? Because then you, you know, as a board, are we, you know, we have science rooms at all of our schools, we have I innovate labs, we have other, so do we keep those or not, like that, you know, those are all questions that we, you know, just have to decide, right? Um.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I'm confused, because I thought when I read this, um, that when determining um, enrollment to site capacity, that they had deducted a couple of classrooms from each site, acknowledging that those were, were alternate use rooms.
But they didn't deduct all of them.
They didn't deduct all of them, but they did deduct a couple from each site, didn't they, or did I misread?
I don't know.
Does anybody else remember seeing that?
Yeah.
I don't think it's, it's really more.
At three, at, at, um, at the elementary schools, three additional classrooms were set aside and not loaded to allow for special uses such as music or resource rooms.
Very well, where are your persons?
It sounds, it sounds greater, sixty-five, right?
Sixty-five, sixty-five, or other uses where students can spend a whole day. Um the elementary sites with special education classrooms were granted an additional non-loaded room for an additional resource space. So secondary students move classes throughout the day, all available classroom spaces were loaded.
Were. So they did do it at the secondary sites, but they ended up in the elementary for some.
So two questions?
Yeah.
So it with what Ellen just said, and this chart on sixty seven with rooms unloaded.
Yeah.
So so that's an additional four not loaded, so we gave each elementary three?
I'll have to find out.
Okay, that would mean seven unloaded rooms. According to their definition.
Yeah, and I'm I'm telling you, we don't have a.
I know.
I mean, right now, there are not a bunch of empty rooms.
So this number probably.
Not being used.
So then this number probably doesn't reflect what Marilyn's putting up, and I don't know if that's what her question was.
Well.
I'm not sure if the rooms not loaded are the ones that they didn't count, I'll find out.
Okay.
I I would guess they're guided by CDE regs that they cannot count those, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I got that.
So when they looked at the capacity of of the school.
CDE probably allows that.
Right.
Of the of the physical plant.
Right.
And they deducted three.
Right.
Classrooms, then they took the projected enrollment and projected class size.
They came up with that.
And and looked at it at the site then.
They still came up with that excess quantity.
Yeah, we looked good is what happened, we looked good.
Yeah, no, it still looks, again, this is if if we loaded all of our classes at thirty two kids a class.
Oh, okay, you're right, you're right.
And all of our classes at twenty eight kids in case, and that does, I mean, we don't do that, right?
That's not.
Our average class size is like twenty one or twenty two, so.
Yeah, I didn't take that into account, you're right, Mr. Buck.
So so that's a big, so that's the reason why you're gonna, you like the capacity enrollment part is very far greater, right? Because if we did load them up that high, we we would get, we that that would be a reality, but um.
So one one additional question on capacity. Are portables considered in this number?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah, they're classrooms, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So so we're at the end, so conclusion, you know, again, it talks about just some of, um, you know, in terms of the district, what do we do? Again, plan for how we're gonna house TK, right? Um do we replace portable classrooms that Mr. Buck was been talking talking about, or replace the portable facilities? Um you know, again, continue to closely monitor residential development, see if these enrollment, you know, trends change, right? Um I think like we talked about with Hawthorne in particular, right? Do we need to talk about boundary adjustments in the future or not? Um we'll have to watch that, of course. Um we're we also have to look at, and and we're doing this now for next year even, the location of some of our other programs. Our special day classes, our, you know, our preschool, um, classes, those types of things. We need to make sure that we're, those are going to sites where they can be maintained and where there's space enough for them. Our two schools that are the, have the toughest part right now in terms of any growth are Baywood and Hawthorne.
Quick, um went on, um, you know, the conclusions on page sixty nine and number one, it says. You know, the additional transitional um kindergarteners that will roll enroll, whether at its elementary schools or in a centralized location, what?
So that what, so so they talked about, um, we talked about just as a a potential idea would be to have. You know, do you have one site that just all the TK kids go to one site? You know, do we, do we take a teach campus and turn all the, you know, take take it back, have teach beyond one part of it. Have the rest of the classrooms as TK and have one TK center for the district? So that, you know, there's pros and cons is what I would tell you, right? It there's trans, there's major transportation issues with that, there's, you know, are you, you know, for a parent. Is it better to have my TK student at the school or my third graders going, you know, like all those things that.
Okay.
You know, that's why we push more to kind of have it at each site. But their their thought was, you know, if that was an idea that could could occur, that's why they talked about it.
It seems like that would be so unfamily friendly.
So.
To have it centralized like that, I I don't. I think that that's problematic. The item five, I read it several times last night and I still don't understand it.
Yeah, I was wondering what educational.
The district should consider, develop and adopt.
And and we have.
Educational specifications for all school sites, what does that mean?
We we actually did that, we actually did that before our, um, with our last bond measure, Mr. Plaza helped with that. And they're actually on our website, and so I I posted them um once we got this, so I'll show you, I'll I'll show you what those are. But basically, and and N spec basically says, um, we, if we were gonna build a new elementary school today. What size would we want the office to be? What size would the multipurpose be? What size would the library be? What size would the classroom be? What size would, um, you know, what's types of spaces would we have a science room, would we have an I innovate lab? So it kind of lists all those out, and that's kind of our goal was to like get to those, right? So that's why we built a new multipurpose room at Bishop's Peak. Because our N spec said that, hey, every school should have a multipurpose room of this size, right? So we we did that, we built that that site.
Totally different, because I I was thinking educational specifications would was a a um programmatic.
Yeah.
And I couldn't understand.
It's a little bit, yeah. Just try them.
So and just. Thanks, I know, what I heard is some of our portables are really, really old. And since we're bringing in all these kids, and they need special larger classrooms, and they need a bathroom that's accessible. Kids want to get it in time.
For TK, yes.
Yeah, and teachers like to have a workroom, do they? Are are there TK portables?
So yes, there are.
Okay.
So, yeah, they have they have TK, and that will be something definitely that we'll be looking at, right? In terms of making those changes, do we use portables or stick builds or how that works facilities wise?
Okay.
But yeah. So so then lastly, of course, when we look at all of this, you know, we do have our our new facility master plan as well, right? All of this comes into, um, you know, those discussions, they all, you know, kind of go together, right? They all make sense. Um and so again, a lot of good information, I think, for everyone, right? Um in looking at this document and tying it in and using it for the future. Um it it helps answer some questions about enrollment and projections and um clarifies, you know, hopefully for the board. Get, you know, where kids live and where they go to school and how this all kinds of works, right? Cause oftentimes we do get this, you know, people make statements. Oh, everyone's going to this school or everyone's leaving type thing, when in reality, no, it's, you know. They actually have the same number of kids coming in that they have leaving, right? So this this just uh puts some actual numbers to that, those conversations, right? Which is hopefully helpful helpful, so.
Well, all of our questions notwithstanding, I think this was a, this report was excellent.
Yeah.
And um and easy to understand, even though I didn't understand some parts of it.
Yeah.
And and if I can, Ryan spent a lot of time with me, this has taken a long time. Uh I mean, kudos to you, Ryan, cause you got it and you can answer all these questions.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I'm so excited about this this study.
It helps, it helps with our planning. Um so that said, if the, if we wanna open up any questions from the public, Mr. Buck, do you wanna?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is potential one, because when I think about the other demographic studies, we have, this really fits right along with them.
Oh.
Um in terms of growth in the city, not a lot of growth on the coast. And even if the, I think the last one or two we did, it talked about perhaps infill in Los Osos building it up. And I don't even think that that's not even considered anymore. So this this was really a good one.
This was meaty.
Yeah, it was a lot there. So yeah, so let's go to the public and see if there's anyone from the public who has, who also has questions. Uh please, you can raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you. Sorry, anybody who has me. Just checking right now.
There's no one who wishes to speak.
Okay, great, thank you very much, thanks to everybody. Uh item four point two is a future school bond discussion unless board members have any other questions regarding this last item. Okay, Ryan, I'm assuming.
Yeah, this is just a kind of a quick update for the board. We told, you know, Dr. Prater and myself told you, we continue to bring back information in regards to a potential bond measure in the future. Um we've met recently with our parent leader meeting, uh our parent leaders. Um you know, we've addressed, you know, different groups and talked about, you know, the the potential of a bond and why, those types of things. Um you know, the more I go around, the more I'm, you know, kind of tying in with the TK. I went to every single school site, you know, we, the need is there, right? There's without doubt, there's a need for us to um to move forward with the school bond in the future. So what I wanted to share with the board today was what what that, what would that timeline look like? What 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 are the dates, how's, if we proceed, if the board decides to move forward, what would that look like? So uh I'm gonna share. That with you. Um and again, that the June twenty two at this point is too, like. It is, that would be a little too crazy, I would, is what I would say, right? In terms of trying to put on the the June ballot. Um e- even though there are some positives with that, right? In terms of moving forward and, you know, getting those those projects that we know. Um because we are a year and a half away from needing more TK classes. And and that, so when you think that now, you know construction, right? You've let, you've you've seen how long it's intended to get there. Um so you know, there there's, there'd be some real positives about having that June date and and hopefully the the help of supporting it. Um but from a reality standpoint, pulling this off, I do think November twenty two is probably, um. You know, a a more realistic goal potentially for us. Um so again, we have our project list, the facility master plan, that's that's there. Um you know, that we did have our, we did our voter survey in November, right? Uh the board learned about that in December, got the information from the survey. Uh Dr. Prater, myself, again, have become, have begun um having those conversations, right? About the bond with our public groups. Um that if if the board desires for us, we'll get, we'll pick those up, that'll become a a bigger. Um you know, something that Dr. Prater and I will have to have more meetings, expand that that conversation out, of course. Um and then we would task Mr. Eisen with putting together this capital financing plan, which we, of course, would share with the board. Uh and then we would go through that whole process like we did with Measure D. Where you come up with the language, you come up with the the resolution statement, you know, all of those things would come forward to the board. From pretty much April and May, um with the board needing to call for a a resol, you know, a a move on this um potential bond. Um election in June of twenty two. So that's, so.
Call for it.
Um to call for it, so to put it on the ballot, right?
Yeah.
So basically, we have to say, hey, th- this is gonna be on the ballot. Um and then the this, and then that sets a timeline. And we would then have to have the resolution, so by August, basically, that's when kind of that. The November election materials are put together, the statement, the tax rate. Um the argument in favor of, if there is an argument against, we would um also put in, you know, our response to that argument, right? Those types of things. Um you know, that we would form a campaign committee, much like we did with Measure D, right? Uh that group would kick off and and run that campaign, of course, outside of uh the school district time and facilities and. Um you know, nothing, it's gotta be a separate organization, right? That campaign will run through November and election day would be November eighth. Ryan, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, sorry.
So that's, I think that a good, a good timeline for the election. So my question goes to. It will be approved, so let's just say it's approved. Okay, how quickly do we go to? Let's see, what do we do? Um we usually have somebody come in and check things out before we go to bid, right? So these are the steps that I remember, I could be wrong. Approval, have some documents done, just so that people can bid on the documents.
So, yeah.
Have a bid, um. Choose choose somebody from the bid process and hopefully get to work.
So normally, so this timeline that you're talking about, right? It's um, so again, and we passed a bond measure in two thousand fourteen, right? We really didn't start any projects until two thousand sixteen. Okay, but again, as a school district, as an organization, we were, like, you know, this was a new process. Like that we were developing, right, in terms of plans and architects and moving in this direction. What I would tell you right now is we're a fine tuned machine. When it comes to school construction and bill bidding and architecture design, those types of things. Um I I didn't wanna go too far yet, but my goal would be after this. If if I had the the board's, you know, support that this looked like something that we were gonna move forward with. Is I will be bringing back to the board a recommendation to um begin the project planning. For some of our highest priority needs, which would include TK. Um the potential of, you know, and you know, the school sites that stand out to me, right? Baywood, Bishop's Peak classrooms, Pacheco classrooms, and then Pacific Beach High School. Those are things that, there's no reason why we couldn't start the architectural. Planning for those projects and get those plans designed, get those stakeholders tied in, right? Get the plan set, um where we could get, hopefully get DSA approval. And then that way, should we pass a bond, November, you know, in November, we would be able to jump on some of those. In particular, the TK programs, um you know, right away. We could get those, get those started, right? Um now, the. The good and bad in that is, we we are, we are then using general fund dollars for those artifacts agreements, right? So, you know, I need to share with you what was possible, right, and what that would look like. And we could pick and choose what what the board would want to move forward on. But um you know, that from a time perspective, makes a lot of sense for us to get some of those things started right now. Um it's, you know, yeah.
I I know that we can't have any commingling of funds. But I wonder if you.
You're talking about campaign election now?
No, I'm talking about getting uh things started, getting a ball rolling.
So we can.
Design and what have you out of our general fund, but then.
That's no problem.
If a bond passes, is that, are we allowed to reimburse our general fund out of the bond proceeds?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
So to be shovel ready, you're gonna have to advance some money.
Right.
But you can't pay it back to your general fund. So the gamble is if you don't pass the bond, then you have to figure out what to do.
So in that case, we are allowed to, but otherwise, there can, there can't be any commingling.
No, I, actually, you could finance all of your facilities out of your general fund, where you had large enough.
Oh, well, yeah, but nobody can do that.
No one in the state of California can do that.
The only commingling, the only commingling issues we have would be, um, really the campaign financing. That that, the 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 board cannot pay or give any money towards a campaign for the bond, right?
To pass the bond, right.
To pass the bond, so that's why there's a subcommittee that does that. Um and then in terms of, so a couple of things, when we look at like how you can use funds. We, the board can use general fund however you want, right? That's up to you to decide. Um developer fees have to be on growth projects, right? There are certain rules and regulations for those fees, right? Um if we, if we do a particular project where we get state matching funds for, we have to, there are audit processes. We have to prove that we spent the money on those projects, right? So like our CTE grants that we received or our boat Santa Fe Charter School grant. So there are some things where there are regulations on how we spend dollars. But in this case, there there's nothing that would stop us from, you know, getting some of those designs and plans ready to to go.
So just, you talked about this earlier and I think it makes sense. So just gave us the timeline for getting a bond, but most important to me would be after the bond is approved, right? So this happens, this happens, this happens. If I, I think it would be interesting to also see the demographic studies, at least in terms of growth of the district. Also, on the same, on the same graph, I don't know if that is doable, but.
Yeah.
So here we are, we're maybe increasing a little, but by twenty twenty four, when we would start building, are we declining at that point?
Yeah, and I would say that, again, we'll have to address that at our at our elementary sites, right?
Right.
In terms of, because that's where the only potential decline, but we're we're pretty stable in terms of overall district enrollment. Um the the big questions for the board are gonna be sixth grade Laguna, right? That's a big, you know, big decision at some point um in the future. Um and then again, I think it's just getting our facilities ready for transitional kindergarten. And um you know, really, we have some schools that are in dire need of modernization.
Oh, right, sorry.
I mean, yeah, so those are, I mean, those are just big things that we we we.
Yeah, even in, even in following enrollment, following enrollment, you're gonna have to spend much more than that.
It doesn't matter, yeah. Now, now do we, again, do we, you know, get rid of some portables at schools? And not replace them, potentially, right? Like those are things that we'll have to look at, right? So a place like Del Mar, different things where there are portables on sites, do, you know, based on enrollment? Are we gonna replace them or are we just not gonna, you know? are we gonna replace them, or are we just not gonna, you know, move them off campus, make more green space, make more? You know, those are things that we'll definitely have to look at as we move forward.
And in a, in a strong sense, you're defending the general fund by passing a bond, because you have so many old campuses that
Oh, there's no doubt.
That the infrastructure is.
Yeah, if we don't pass the school bond, we're, we have danger issues.
I meant to preface that comment with, there's no doubt that we need to first to to upgrade and take care of our schools. So some of the things that I'm thinking is, did we ever fix the bells in the schools? Did we fix the fire alarm arms in the school?
Yeah.
Some of the schools have security issues where you can literally open a gate.
Yeah.
And walk on campus with all the craziness that's out there and the fences that we put in. You can still walk on a school site, where some schools have a push bar on the inside of the gate.
That's the facility master plan outline, all of those things, right?
Yeah. And so, I, I.
That are, that are kept.
Please don't interpret anything, I've said.
Oh, yeah, no.
That we think we don't need this bond.
Of course. Alan, did you have your hand up?
Oh, Chris was.
No, no, please, go ahead, you were first, you were first.
Um, my only question is, this bond, um, when we talk about, uh, sixth grade at Laguna, this would not address any of what would be needed to be done at Laguna, where we move sixth grade at.
It could, it should, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's.
Well, this.
So what's gonna happen?
This bond would have to include modernization of our middle schools.
Yeah, okay.
I wanna be super clear about that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, Los Osos middle school is a part.
The, we're, we're gonna want to make sure that the bond language is open enough.
Okay.
To where the, it fits whatever needs we have in the future, right?
Right, just wasn't, when you were listing schools, the middle schools were not included, right?
Yes. And and that's why it's in, that's why even the six, potential sixth grade campus is in the facility master plan. We, we did that on purpose, right?
Right.
As a, to show that this is what what, you know, the board may decide to do in the future, so.
Okay, all right.
We're gonna wanna have all those options available to us, right? Depending on enrollment, what if, what if it is a high projection? What if our elementary schools do get big? What if we have to look at the sixth grade and go for some of the, right?
Well, it also provides us the opportunity to continue looking at our academic and philosophical goals for our students.
Agreed. And and I would, I would.
Be separate and apart from the facility, but.
Agreed.
It has to do with student achievement and their opportunities, the best learning environment, thank you.
I think, I I, I think what you're saying is, this has to be a focus on modernization.
Yes.
That's, that's, modernization, safety.
Yes. Definitely.
And I think, um, energy improvement too.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that we've been committed to?
Yes.
Um, but then the other thing you left off your list, Ryan, I think we, I think we're going to need to look at, do we have to re-balance the districts? The school boundaries? Is that, you know, yes, moving sixth grade potentially to Laguna is one thing. But I still think, especially in the Hawthorne area, if you're thinking about Hawthorne, Sensheimer, are we gonna need to look at those boundaries and and Los Ranchos?
CL Smith.
CL Smith for sure, the city, the city schools, I think.
The, the, yeah, Smith, I'm not, I'm not as worried about Smith, Hawthorne in particular, right?
Hawthorne, yeah.
Because they just, they they're landlocked, there's just not space there, so that's.
Right.
And and I'm also worried about a lack of enrollment at Sensheimer, to be quite honest with you. So I, we may need to, you know, push that boundary in particular in the city. Um, but but some of this, we're just gonna, you know, on an annual basis, I'm gonna have to report to you, right? Let you know kind of what's happening, where we're going, because this change of Pacheco too. We don't, I don't know how that's gonna pan out yet, right? We are shrinking Pacheco, but but they are going to be taking students from the city schools more than the coast now. So how, how does that all, you know, from all this demographic study, you just looked at migration, will that change or not? That's what we're just gonna have to annually look at.
We've, we've had, we've had a few years to see what happens with Bishop's Peak, but I think initially, some of that in migration to Bishop's Peak was due, was due to people's belief that that would help them get in to teach, yes. And, you know, so that's limiting since teachers over to Pacheco.
Yes, that's not.
So, um, hopefully, this is my last question. First, I totally agree with Ellen, there may, there, in fact, I don't know, but that year that we're gonna take from is that, there may, I would almost think that we need to look at the philosophical educational program is different. So what is the ratio of teachers to students? Because we know that's a huge fat front, we're all about committing to the kids. And then the last thing for me is, we're gonna have a careful discussion of boundaries, right? Hopefully, and a discussion of which schools we invest in, which schools we look, go into the future. So, I mean, that's my hope.
Yeah.
So that's my, that's my two deal.
Some of that, that, so that's where that big April, May, that, you know, prepare resolution for calling election, including valid language, project list, right? That all these things we're talking about right now, which should, I mean, for me, need to encompass everything in our facility master plan, right? Um, and then the final tax rate statement, right? Because there's gonna be a choice that you're, that we're gonna make. Is it forty-nine for a hundred thousand, is it thirty-nine, is it twenty-nine? And so that amount of the bond that will dictate the overall amount for projects, right? And so those are things that, you know, that we'll be coming back to during those two months to discuss. Mr. Eisen will be, you know, playing a more, you know, vital role in kind of sharing what that looks like, what it means. Um, you know, in terms of looking at projects and and overall amounts, based on our overall property tax. And then what they do realize too is they, you know, you don't just sell two hundred million dollars worth of bonds one year and get all that money, right? This is something that is over a period of time. We were very fortunate with our bond measure, that because home prices and values rose so high, that we were able to draw that, that hundred seventy-seven million dollars quicker than maybe initially was projected. Uh, and the benefit to our taxpayers was their actual tax costs went down, right? So that's, you know, instead of the forty-nine, it's thirty-nine now. So, um, you know, that that'll continue with Measure D, that number will continue de- declining in the future, right? That what they, with with, you know, current property tax. Uh, you know, people who own property pay property tax for Measure D, so that, which is a positive, right? For so, well, uh, but John will share all of that.
So, so maybe this is a question for for Ron a little bit more than you, Ryan, but it could be for both of you guys. So given the increases in inflation, which means, you know, bond yields are going up, right? How's that going to affect our potential bonds that we might do? Um, and, um, it does that add a sense of urgency to things in terms of bond sales?
Interesting.
If interest rates go up, which could affect taxpayers, you know, again, thinking about, hopefully not running out of money like Tascadero did.
Yeah, you know, the, uh, this period of time to me, and I I get to be the oldest guy here, I think, looks a lot like nineteen seventy-one.
He's looking at me.
I'm just looking around, but I'm pretty sure I am. But this looks like nineteen seventy, nineteen seventy-one to me, where inflation is going to occur, the cost of things is gonna skyrocket. The value of the dollar is realistically gonna go down, which favors us in the sense that if we pass a big bond, people are gonna be paying it back, uh, with inflated dollars. So in other words, it gets to be a bargain if we're in that period of time, and I believe we are. Uh, the the larger bond you pass, the better advantage it is to the guys paying it back. That that sounds like it doesn't match up, but it absolutely does.
Thank you.
So, best time in the world to do it.
But that, I will tell you, yeah, that's a great, it's a great question for John Eisen too.
Yeah.
Right, in terms of, you know, coming back, so we'll have John, you know, he's gonna, he'll play a much more active role, right? In terms of, you know, sharing information, coming back, um, as we move down this, you know, potential path.
And I talked to, Ron knows this, I talked to him earlier about this, but, you know, I was thinking about when we did our last bond and the board's concerns were more, very localized, you know, the, um, issue in Los Osos about the sewer project was going through, would people support it? Moro Bay is going through that now, you know, what would that look like? And personally, I feel like now, at this time, the issues are more state, national, and global. And with inflation and with just some of the general restlessness and unease after the pandemic and all that, how will people feel about this? And I had asked at, um, when we discussed the survey results, if there had been a question on there about the citizen residents, the people who'd been contacted about their feelings about inflation. You know, if they were concerned about it, and was told that wasn't a question on the survey. So, you know, it's just something, you know, I'm not pessimistic about it and I will support it. And, um, Catherine was instrumental, I'm looking at you, Catherine, was instrumental in getting our last bond through, because you worked like a crazy person on everything on Measure D. Um, but I'm, uh, you know, that's just a, I don't know how this works. I can't read these tea leaves, but it it's a different sense now. And and I will say, I was also happily proven completely wrong, all my concerns, when we had passed with, what was it, the second or first highest pass rate of any bond that was on the ballot that year. So, um, I am no.
Seventy-two percent.
I am absolutely no, um, expert in this field, but I just, I'm just expressing, you know, what.
Agreed.
Um, and I think that I get what Ron is saying, it makes a lot of sense to me, but that's hard to articulate to voters, I think, that.
It's very hard.
You know, spend a lot of money now and you'll get even more for it, you know, and.
You'll pay less and get more.
Or spend less and get more, but, you know, either way, it's just, it's, it can be a tough sell. So I'll be curious, you know, once we, we how it sorts out.
As you and I touched on in our earlier conversation, that doesn't change the need, the need is definitely.
Right, that's right, that's right.
I worry about crazy things, like, do we have enough money for infrastructure and our facility master plan? So I went over that last week with the, the guy in Rome. And said, you know, we had about a, what was it, maybe twelve percent surprise in our whole bond program? Because there wasn't a project called infrastructure at Slow High. And there wasn't one called infrastructure at Moro Bay. Those were two big surprises, and now we are expanding the number of campuses. So we're saying, well, what, everybody thinks about what's above the ground, what's below the ground? You know, I've gone into districts where they have gas lines, galvanized gas lines running underneath elementary school and classrooms, and they're leaking. You know, and that, those kind of things, horrifying. So I think it'd be prudent, even in these pre-projects that we're talking about, to do a real analysis of every campus that we're talking about, to figure out those infrastructure needs, get those woven in right upfront. So, because they truly are safety measures also, just as a side.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Brinkley, what is, what are you looking for today from us?
Nothing, today was just kind of an update to let me know what the the bond timeline looks like, potentially for a November election. Um, you know, the board has a facility master plan now, that's, it's good. I mean, it 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 has everything, you know, and it shows, right? The need that's there, so I think that's, you know, in terms of moving forward, right? So now you get to see this, I wanted to make sure that we, there weren't like, the board, you know, every, no way, don't, don't even think about it, right? Like, so what what I'm feeling is that Dr. Prater and I need to continue our conversations with people in the public and our political figures and make sure that people are aware that, you know, what we're thinking about and talking about. Uh, make sure that they're supportive, right? That there's not some, you know, issue or problem related to, you know, that that this is going to do something, you know, in that way. Um, so, you know, we just have to continue to kind of move in that, that direction, so. Um, so the next step will be, again, bringing for me to you, some of those ideas about potentially starting some of the architect projects now, right? Prioritizing some of those things, and then I'll have to work with, um, Mr. Eisen on really, you know, beginning to outline all those nuts and bolts uh, that you actually went through.
Right.
You you might not remember, but you can probably go back to our study sessions back in two thousand fourteen and
I remember.
You'll see these same items that your project list and what are we prioritizing and what the tax statement was and what the language, um, that was gonna be on the ballot was, and all those things, right? That was all done, that are board meetings that anyone can see, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll keep that process.
So what you and Dr. Prater will be doing, you will be doing independent of the board.
Yes.
But from the board, the next thing that we'll hear from you is probably a request for authorization to spend some front-end money out of the general plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And without, without, you know, on the timeline to ultimately get to the point where you guys authorize us to move forth with the bond. And so that's coming as well. And, uh, like Ron said, this is a much different and more complicated pros, uh, proposition, because you're dealing with twelve, thirteen sites, as opposed to primarily just two. And when you start meeting with each site, say, ooh, you know, what needs to be done here? Then you multiply that times thirteen, the wish lists go off the charts. So keeping ironically.
No wish list.
Keeping.
We have needs.
But keeping, keeping this focused, that's why I'm so interested in doing this, because we have, as Ryan said, a fine-tuned machine. Our formula's right, we keep our costs down, we're efficient, we're effective, checks and balances are in place. I worry, in a project like I'm, or a proposition like what we're proposing here, it it could, it could becomes un-un-un, um, manageable quickly if we don't really have a great process, and we have a great team, so I know we can do it.
Mr. Brinkley, do you wanna go to the, do you wanna ask the public?
Yeah, yeah, is there anybody from the public that would like to finish up here? Not seeing anyone.
And I'd just like to thank, you know, Ryan and Ron, and I know Chris Bonin isn't here right now, but, you know, you've, um, we've cut our teeth on this with you leading the way. I know we have a couple of new trustees who have been through this from the very beginning, but, um, it's, even though I've been through it once before, it's just, it is, it's huge to consider, so.
It's a big ask, right? It's scary, you know, there's a lot of, but, yeah, you know, it's one of those things where you just need.
But, um, so, thank you for leading the charge, I mean, it's, it's a really necessary and important conversation.
Appreciate it.
So, I guess it's time to adjourn this meeting, and we will see you all next Tuesday night at four a fifteen. So thank you all for.
Thank you everyone much, thanks for being here.
Have a good weekend.
Great, thank you.